People hey. Sup the Sanon chat. Love you is at hashtag Pogus Campers. Pog. As high three. Whoop the San streaming again. Alright. Some of them gum. First time catching stream right at beginning. I can't believe it's been over a year. Thanks for being great company chat. Has. I checked this is ready. Please send money help. Yeah. Five months has. Has slap. How's everyone doing? What do you think Snoopy's political ideology is? I that he's a neocon? The same smash FB block has slam. Thank you.
Waiting for Hassan. Gonna go watch some videos. And just do a lot of commentary on his dream. It's all a meme. So now what are we waiting for? Waiting for Hassan. What will he do when his life? Open up the casino, let the gamble in. It's time to sit. I bet we're gonna be sitting here waiting for Hassan. I used to come here for politics. Now I watch him game and yell at great names. All day. God, how long have I been sitting here waiting for Hassan? Waiting for Hassan. Waiting for Hassan.
What's going on everybody? I hope everyone's having a fantastic evening, afternoon, prenoon. No matter where you are in the world, I'm a Sam Piker in this house and I'm a broadcast coming to you. Live from sunny California, Los Angeles folks. We are live and alive and I hope all the boys, all the girls and all the MBs are having a fantastic one. It is eighty-five degrees and sunny here in California, Los Angeles, folks. A beautiful day, an absolute banger of a day. Wednesday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Eleven fifteen AM and I am perfectly on time as a matter of fact. Wild. Wild considering the reality that I just did a podcast and usually when I do a podcast like this. I'm a little late to uh come on the stream, you know, but uh I made it. I made it on time. You know what I'm saying? It's crazy. It's wild. And my dogs has got my first vac shot. Hell yeah. Hope everyone's having a great one though. Last night, uh we did my mom's birthday. That's why I ended the podcast or ended the podcast, ended the broadcast early. Okay. And uh I hung out with her. And it was great. It was wonderful. We had five different kinds of cakes. Five. Different kinds of cakes. Let me take my uh mini.
Hello.
Mini fridge. Out. Okay. And uh it was wonderful. We celebrated her. I um your our diet was under attack. I see. Oh yeah, of course. It was really bad. I just gave up. Honestly, I just fucking. I just gave up.
Chat you look very cute hass.
Like I I gave up on diet last night for sure. I mean, there were sprinkles cupcakes. There were uh like, there was a banana cream pie from a different restaurant. And we love apple pan banana cream pie. There was like a magnolia bakery cake that was made. There was like some fucking fruit tart thing. But of course Jank brought cuz you know his taste is dog shit as of late. But uh I knew that. Listen, I I knew that if I. If I didn't have anything, I knew that like they would throw a fit. Like that would genuinely devastate my mom. Like she would take it as a personal slight. So I just. I ate a lot. Okay.
Waiting for Hassan jammies.
We're losing gains? No, it'll be alright. One day, it's fine. Your socia's are not all showing, brother? Yeah, it's fine. Anyway, um but yeah, that's that's all I did. And then this morning I woke up and I had Austin. Pick me up. And we went to the uh, we went to the podcast. Are you getting that alert? Are we getting that alert thing in two minutes? What alert? An emergency alert in two minutes for what?
And we are not totally ignoring the fact that Siberia had a wildfire recently. Thanks so bomber slash S. Eleven may say charger, 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 kek.
We'll be conducting a national test in coordination with the FCC of emergency alerts system at two twenty PM. Oh no. Else we go to televisions, radios, while especially configure cell phones will receive an emergency alert code message? Oh no. I can't waver the hogs to just be real normal about this. I'm sure the hogs will be real fucking normal about this dude. Oh my God, I gotta stream this. I will be streaming it.
We must return to Munka.
This is gonna be great. Okay, so. Someone said, is this worldwide? No, Anne. Says Nana and Truth Seeker. No, it will not be worldwide, Anne. Holy shit, these people fucking hate Cuomo. Okay, well. We'll look at that sort of stuff. Notification down again? Don't worry, FEMA is uh taking care of it. Twitch might not have been it. Twitch might not have notified you all that I'm live. But guess what? FEMA will let y'all know that I'm live. I did not get an alert by the way. I'm waiting for the alert. I'm waiting for the alert dude.
Hassle, 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 hassle.
Hold on, we're waiting for the alert. We're waiting for the alert. We're waiting for the alert. Waiting on alert. Gonna go watch some videos. And just do a lot of FEMA commentary. I just got a software update. We are waiting on the alert dude. Would this awesome I'd be willing to critique a podcast with hot takes about the Olympics, EG? Jakari Richardson is a grifter because he has a sponsorship for doing nothing? No. Okay, well fuck it. Fuck the fuck the FEMA alert. I will be tweeting out that I'm live though. I don't know about the FEMA alert, but. Here's an alert. That the daycare is open. And we're talking hog watch. Anti-masker parents. Losing their minds at school. Schools. Covid updates. Emergency. Alert system. Is working here. Get in now. WWW dot. Twitch dot TV slash. Hassan Abi. Did Twitch change or did Twitter change its fucking notifications or something like or not notifications like? The the uh thing that they use? The font, not notification, the font. Do you have to opt in to get it on your phone? I don't know. I just like didn't get it. Now I feel bad. Like what if uh? Like what if an emergency outbreak was happening and I didn't want, didn't know like, am I just gonna die now? I wanna fucking get the alert from FEMA. I wanna get the FEMA alert folks. You know what I'm saying? Nanski Pilowsky rap? Nanski Pilowsky? What the fuck is Nancy Pillow? Article I read just said between eleven twenty and eleven fifty. Latest tab on Twitter says some people are getting it. We get the alert after the nuke. Yeah, does this mean that like it's too late? I want the FEMA alert, brother. Alright, let's just get started. Okay, I heard it on the radio. Who the fuck has radio dude? I'm pretty sure you can actually turn off the uh. The emergency like alerts that you get from the government chat. Okay, okay, let's get started. Would you wanna know if you got nuked honestly? Better to just go in peace, Munka whom? No, I would like to know. Alright, we got, let's get started with uh bye bye Cuomo. I don't know what side talk New York City is, but. Seems kinda cool. Let's take a look at what New Yorkers had to say about Andrew Cuomo's. Departure from the governor's mansion and also New York politics and politics in general.
That Cuomo nigga said we couldn't be outside last year. Where we at?
What is your message to Cuomo right now?
Rotten hell, you son of a bitch!
Cuomo, you put pineapple on your pizza and you get no pussy!
You're next, Blasio. You're fucking next. You're next. We on your ass, boy. We on your ass, boy.
If she say no, you gotta go!
Twitter fucking video is so dumb.
The Italians don't claim that kick Cuomo. We don't fuck with him. We don't fuck with that quick Cuomo. Hit the fuck out!
We got Trump in the fucking silky. Are you his queen?
Cuomo, don't you get away with this shit! When I see you, I'm gonna grab you by your fucking neck!
We replacing Cuomo with Bobby Schmerner!
Bobby for governor! Bobby for governor!
Cuomo get no pussy! Cuomo get no pussy! Cuomo get no pussy! Cuomo get no pussy!
Okay, that was pretty good. What the fuck is this dude? What is side talk New York? Like they just do shit like this? Oh, they just blast off and they say eight thirty PM tonight, Union Square? And then they just have like. And they just have like people go wild on it or something? Channel five vibes? I like that, you know, they had fucking, of course they had a bunch of Trump supporters and shit there too, but. Go to their YouTube. Are these people leading the revolution? What? We already get our band video of the day? Yeah, that's the band video of the day. This is afraid of phobia shaking my head? No, there was a real Italian there.
Side talk, we here baby, let's go!
The cops is sucking dick. They're telling us to turn the fucking music. Like what's going on? It's Dominican season. Fuck is you talking about?
Suck my dick! Y'all not shutting us down today, motherfucker!
In the Dominican parade, you know we on one seven. No, that's the block if niggas ain't know.
Wait tomorrow, mother! We in the car goes with it.
Bro, who holds a mic like this dude? Look at this. That's. That's awesome. It's just like, my man was like, oh, the entire part of the mic that I'm supposed to hold? Fuck that. I'm holding. I'm literally gonna hold the the part that I, that the part that hears my voice.
Before the Bronx nigga!
Side talk, y'all don't need side talk. Like what's up with y'all?
Yo, after this parade, there's gonna be so much ass shaking. Y'all don't even know what's going on. Only in New York City, y'all heard?
This will be Dominican all about war nigga!
Play the music and we're gonna dance. Play the music, we're gonna dance.
Yo, we only smoke straight Zaza bro. No hookah. Hookah for the thotties though. Don't get me wrong. For the thotties!
We only smoke straight Zaza, no hookah. Hookah for the thotties. Hey, that's a man. That's a man who did not forget the smoke. It's a rapper grip? They watch too much Eight Mile? Dude, this is awesome. This is fucking dope. My man just disrespected the entirety of the Middle East dude. Hey, we're coming for you, brother. You understand me? Fuck you mean hookahs for the thotties? Huh? New York City Dominicans never sleep? So they have like a bunch of these videos, huh? Bronx Dominican Day Parade. Yeah, I I pulled it up on YouTube when I saw it. I should have just played it off YouTube. This one, Fourth of July in Dickman Side Talk is just.
Side talk NYC, we in dark, you know what's up nigga?
Bro, that's. This Crip Spider-Man dude.
Fuck is you talking about? Side, I don't know NYC. We in dark man! We in dark man!
What do you wanna say to the Statue of Liberty right now?
Yo, she's not even American! She's French!
Ay yo, Uncle Sam never had a fucking red brim like that, you heard?
I'm losing my fucking mind dude. Oh, that was, I gotta run that back. Oh, that is the most New York man. This this right here, literally the most New York man in America.
Yo, Uncle Sam never had a fucking red brim like that, you heard?
Uncle Sam never had a red brim like that, you heard?
Just about to get lit.
It's gonna be really lit. So crazy. It's even gonna be really crazy. It's gonna be up in the sky.
Wow! Happy Fourth of July! We outside nigga! Ain't you fucking dumb nigga?
God, he has Tim's on. Oh my God. Oh my God. Oh my God, Spider-Man has Tim's on. Oh, he has the dead ass Tim's on dude. Oh no.
We outside!
We outside, we outside.
You say we outside, we outside, we outside!
He had to, bro, he had, he had to drive away. He had to drive away cuz he's like, I'm gonna be whooping your ass later Spider-Man. He's like. He's like, hey, you know, you're, you know, I I'll give you a response, but like. I will be, I will be whooping your ass like a little bit later, so. Tim's wasn't Tim's, those are Rockaware boots. Oh shit. I didn't know Spider-Man was a crib. Is that canon? Yes.
Who's the president? Byron.
Who?
Byron.
Say what's up to Byron.
What's up Byron?
I'm the boardwalk.
Byron.
Let's see a spell! Coney Island on the concrete, motherfucker!
Ay yo, I'm Coney Island finest over here with all the Coney Island finalists who doing things right, you hear me? And we knocking niggas grandmothers off they fucking skates, you know? What I'm saying about her fucking socks, you hear me? If you see his hard hat at your crib, just know I meant her ribs, you hear me?
Joe Byron, here I am. I'm nobody.
Why is he having sex with grandmas dude? That's crazy.
But I'm a somebody in the Lord Jesus Christo!
Coney Island nigga. Pang.
What?
Pang!
What's your name?
Pang! I'm trying to tell you one thing this summer, don't die for free. Don't die, not for free, you know?
He's right dude. That's brilliant. Not the grandmas and their skates. Dude, these videos are awesome. Holy shit. I wanna go through all of it and we'll, we'll. We'll look at it. We'll come back to this later, but let's do it. That mic is spreading Corona for all of Coney Island. Don't lie, this is making me miss the east coast fam. Just know you welcome back at any time, my guy, you heard? No dude. Like. No, okay? No, cuz honestly. It's just too much. It's too aggro dude. I like, I like the west coast vibes like the fucking crazies out here do like breathing shit. You know what I mean? They're not like. They're not so aggressive like, like they're about to fight you at any given moment. I feel like when you're in New York or when you're in the east coast, like the fight or flight response is constantly kicking in. You know what I mean? You're going on the subway. It's like fight or flight always. Whereas like on the west coast. Didn't mean to completely derail your stream with side talk New York City law. Yeah, it was fine. It's a good derailment. Toronto, New York, Boston, fucking east coast to Canada, all crazies, dead ass. I don't know why, everyone, everyone on the, when you, when I go back to New York, like you know how you code switch? Like when I go back to Turkey, I have a Turkish accent. I speak Turkish in a Turkish accent. Okay? It's like, when you go back to east coast, all of a sudden my voice is like a couple octaves higher. You know what I'm saying? Yo. Dude, that shit is mad good. Yo, that pizza is mad good dude. Dead ass. Yo, dead ass B, that pizza is mad good. All of a sudden, this is how I'm talking like, you know what I'm saying? Or it's not higher, lower. Yeah, I meant lower dog. I meant lower. My bad. I used to say mad everything. Mad was so important in my fucking vernacular. What is this? This more? What is this? This morning, New York Times Tech Guild, "This morning, over 300 of our colleagues sent an email to management stating that we will not tolerate the unfair labor practices they seek to divide us. But we are ready to walk out at noon. When we first asked management for recognition, they declined. No cap, saying they thought an election would be the fairest approach to unionization. When we presented them with the petition of 70% of our units stating that they wanted to vote yes in an expedited online election, management... Management deadass declined again, saying they prefer the NLRB process." You sound like Logan Paul speaking to a black man? Yes, I have substituted my mad for helas now. Just let one person catch you having a good time out here and code-switched up. Gonna haunt you on LSF forever, no cap. It's gonna... It'd be mad embarrassing, my guy. Yeah, I know. Don't worry about it. Your regular voice like OG Jared? You used to say mad, now you just stay mad, sad? No, I was... I was way angrier when I was on the East Coast, dude. It's something in the fucking weather. Something in the... In the air. Are you kidding me? This is me chilled out. If I was living in fucking New York or something, I'd be so much... I would be so much angrier. Yo, that pizza OD good, my guy. Say less. Say less. Can't even get a fucking decent breakfast sandwich out here in the streets of fucking Los Angeles. It's the Atlantic salt? Yeah. It's the humidity here. I don't know what it is, but there's humidity everywhere else. I have definitely gone soft. I've definitely gone soft as I've like lived in a West Coast for an extended period of time. You want point with the lingo? Dude, I lived in... I've lived in fucking New Jersey for four years. I know the fucking lingo, dude. New York City slang was so heavy when my roommate said, "It's type brick outside," I legit thought I was having... He was having a stroke. Nah, it's brick fam. That shit mad bunk beat, yes. Why do you play Guess Which Person I've Had Sex With in parties? Dude, what's wrong with you, dude? That's like not even a real fucking thing. He was joking. And like, that's from like a month ago. Like, what, did you just see the clip? You fucking idiot? Did y'all see brick meaning a long period of time? What? No, brick means cold, dude. What? No, brick is not like a time measurement. It means it's cold. Yeah, my man's on the... First of all, New Jersey is not New York the fuck. It's not, but it's still a part of East Coast culture, which is also like heavily influenced by Italian-American culture. It's the tri-state, yeah. Of course you say that, New Jersey frog. I'm not a New Jersey frog. I'm embarrassed about my New Jersey past. I deny it. Here in DC and Southern MD, brick means a long period of time? Grip is a time measurement? Teach him. I thought grip was... I thought grip was a... Was a unit of weight. Like, I thought grip was weight for... Like weed, maybe? Like amount? No? I'm thinking of zip. Okay, maybe... Maybe zip. Grip can be a handgun as well. And then people get mad at AVE, dude. It's so much fucking cooler than... Like annoying American English. And then people are like, "I can't believe... I can't believe whites are stealing this." Like, yeah, no shit, dude. No culture. What do you want? Anyway. Heard it talking about yesterday that this is the time to take advantage of higher pay, whereas you know the rest? Yeah, it's what... I think... You know what I just realized, actually? Chatter pointed this out as well? It's actually white culture to steal from other cultures. So when people are saying like, "Oh, man, white people stole AVE," or whatever, they're literally doing cultural erasure. Guess what? That's anti-white racism, dude. You're literally not allowing the whites to do what they do, and that's fucked up. That's actually fucked up. Okay, what is this? Rappers drop bars? Nancy Pelosi. We need to find who sent this to me and said, "You have to watch this rap about Nancy Pelosi and said Pillow-Cee." Okay, I take back what I said about white people stealing culture. I think white people should not be allowed to rap. That's... I mean, I've always had that take, though. You guys know that. It's like illegal. In my world, it's illegal for white people to rap. Let's just watch Side Talk forever. I knew Eminem is getting too political for me, yeah. It is ironic. That was a joke. It's like, I feel like I need a fucking shower after that. Are you gonna collab with Supermega? Uh, I'm not entirely familiar with what they do, but I mean, I'm fucking down, dude. I need to do more collabs. Like, I think that's chill. I like doing collabs and stuff. So, yeah, if they wanna have me on their podcast, like, that'd be sick. I would totally do it. Uh, we'll look at Mike Pillow's... We'll look at Michael Pillow's, uh, super symposium, uh, in a second. We'll do that. We'll definitely do that. So, let's get started with the top news story of the day. Obviously, Senate Democrats have passed the $3.5 trillion budget framework. Beer, 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 beer. And, uh, obviously, you know, Joe Manchin was just waiting for the opportunity. He was like sitting around, you know, hanging upside down in some fucking basement that he lives in in his West Virginia mansion that's built like a chateau, because he's a fucking bat. Okay? Well, he's a moth. He's Mothman, but whatever. Does anyone remember the... Do you guys remember that fucking tweet I had? About Joe Manchin, like, the moment, literally like moments after we found out that, uh, the Georgia seats were going, uh, to Democrats in the special election? And I immediately tweeted about Manchin and I told you, "A lot of you don't know who Joe Manchin is, but you will find out." Something along those... Something along those lines? I mean, we... We sure have heard his name a lot, huh, since then? So... Yeah, the Mothman cometh. And he... Oh, he came. He's just waiting, dude. He's been fucking... Yeah, I pre-watched. I pre-watched, uh, the world. That's what happened. I mean, anyone who knows even a little bit about politics knew that that was gonna happen, but, you know, that's... It did happen, so... Yeah. President Joe Manchin, President of the United States of America. Joe Manchin, the most important man in politics. He's, uh, he's back at it again, but let's watch this first. Let's have a brief moment of celebration for a second before he gets like totally fucking ruined here.
Overnight, hours after passing a major infrastructure bill with bipartisan support, the Senate took another big step to push through President Biden's agenda. It narrowly approved a $3.5 trillion blueprint for family, health, and environmental programs. Much of that would be paid for with higher taxes on wealthy Americans and corporations. Chris Van Cleve is on Capitol Hill for us. Chris, good morning to you. What's next?
Tony, good morning. Now they have to take this framework and turn it into an actual bill. And what's inside that bill, it's gonna be crucial to passing not only the Budget Act, but also this infrastructure bill they agreed on yesterday. If they manage to do that, they will deliver on many of President Biden's promises, but the road ahead could be rough and long.
The yeas are 50, the nays are 49, and the concurrent resolution as amended is agreed to.
This morning, the Senate approved a $3.5 trillion budget resolution, setting the framework for a massive budget bill loaded with progressive social programs, including child and senior care and money to combat climate change. The 50 to 49 party line vote came after an overnight votorama on a lengthy series of non-binding amendments.
This amendment is just plain anti-pickup truck. Let's start there.
Oh my god, dude. We gotta see some of these. Is there like a good, uh... Is there like a good compy of like some of the best like dumbass takes on this? It's like people who have literally never touched a pickup truck. Or... Or people who think that like, you know, just mentioning pickup truck is the end-all-be-all of like working-class American. It's just... It's just McCloskey fucking, uh, type beat right here. You know how he like went into his family farm and was like, "I'm picking up bail ahead. That's why Missouri should vote for me." Just LARPing. I just... It's one of the most disgusting things. I guess so annoyed by it. I don't know why we don't shit on like Republican candidates and Republican politicians like LARPing as much as we do about like Beto O'Rourke or some shit, you know? Because like, we always make fun of like, you know, John Kerry or any number of like liberals who, uh, try to, you know, speak Spanish or do stuff like that. But we never... We never ever make fun of Republicans who are like, "Oh, I'm so real, working-class Americans." Like, bitch, you're literally an Exxon lobbyist before you became a politician. Like, what the fuck are you talking about? Like... You've... You haven't touched... You haven't touched grass or hay outside of like a marketing campaign.
Opposing my amendment is a vote in support of defunding the police.
Some senators expressed...
Yeah, that's, uh, Tommy Tuberville had a... Had a really, really important proposal that got passed with a 99 to 0 fucking vote. Here, let's watch... Let's watch what that was before we continue on with this budget resolution. Dude, it's all fucking... It's all flash. I swear to god, look.
I called on my colleagues to support our law enforcement by voting yes for this amendment. Opposing my amendment is a vote in support of defunding the police and against the men and women in blue.
The gentleman's time has expired.
Madam President!
Senator from New Jersey.
Oh my fucking god. Cory Booker, like, chill, dude. Yo, this is why veganism should be illegal, okay? What the fuck, dude? You don't have to... What are you on right now? What kind of yerba mate did you have earlier, Cory Booker?
I am so excited. This is perhaps the highlight of this long and painful and torturous night.
Dude, what is this? Like, Cory Booker acting like he just got accepted into the Church of Scientology, dude? Bro, be a human for once, dude. Cory Booker, be a human challenge, okay? Cory Booker, you're... You're going... You're doing it again, okay? He always just... He lays it on too thick. He's like, "We get it, bro. You're an alien, okay? We get it. Like, you can't hide this from us. We understand." He's always looking like... He always acts in a way where he's just like trying to show you that he's a human being? This stream playback, all the resolution? I'm not gonna watch five hours, dude. That's crazy.
Senator from New Jersey.
I am so excited. This is perhaps the highlight...
And I know he's trying to make fun of the bill. It doesn't fucking matter, though. He's just like, "Just be normal." Dude, be normal, dude.
Of this long and painful and torturous night. This is a gift. If it wasn't complete abdication of Senate procedures and and esteem, I would walk over there and hug my colleague from Alabama. And I will tell you right now, thank god, because there's some people who have said that they're members of this deliberative body that wanted to fund the police, to my horror. And now this senator has given us the gift that finally, once and for all, we can put to bed this scurrilous accusation of somebody in this great esteemed body who wanted to fund the police. So let all of us, 100 people, not walk, but sashay down there and vote for this amendment and put to rest the lies. And I am sure I will see no political ads attacking anybody here over to fund the police. And I would ask unanimous consent to add something else to this obvious bill. Can we add also that every senator here wants to defund the police, believes in God, country, and apple pie? Thank you.
People are clapping, dude. They're such nerds, bro. That way... The way that "just be fucking normal" has become a common line I use in my life. It's just... But it's true. Just be normal, dude. Why... Why can't you? Like, I get the energy that he's trying to put out there. If it wasn't a complete abdication of Senate procedures... Then during the vote, he did just that? Oh, Jesus Christ. He did. He did.
This is Capito. Mr. Carden.
Jesus Christ, dude. What a weirdo. Everyone gets to feel like a winner... Winner. Tuberville's office on the 99 vote. All Senate Democrats pounded the chance to distance themselves from defund the police rhetoric. It's just like, dude, so fucking weird, dude. Hold on, we're gonna get to that in a second. The Mothman cometh, dude. Hold up. Hold up. We're gonna get to fucking... We're gonna get to the American king, okay? We're gonna get to the king of America, because many of you think like America is run by a democratic process. Some people say it's not a direct democracy. It's actually a representative... Uh, it's a representative democracy. Some people say it's a republic. It's not a democracy. A lot of those people that happen to say that are fascists. It's very weird. But like, ultimately, it's none of those things. It's a monarchy, uh, and Joe Manchin is at the top of it. This is Joe Manchin's world and we happen to be living in it, okay? So... So he... He might have a problem with, uh, this $3.5 trillion bill, even though like we endlessly had to listen to him and see his ugly-ass face on television for months and months on end, as the bipartisan bill was being deliberated on, okay? So, uh, let's see. Let's see what's going on here. Let's, uh... We'll get to that in a second. I gotta pee first, but... Let's, uh, finish this up and then I'll show you. Here comes Lord Manchin.
expressed exasperation at the procedure.
So let all of us, 100 people, not walk, but sashay down there and vote for this amendment.
But earlier Tuesday, bipartisanship briefly reigned as the Senate overwhelmingly passed a $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill.
On this vote, the yeas are 69.
19 GOP senators joined Democrats in voting to rebuild the nation's highways, bridges, public transit, and expand access to broadband.
After years and years of Infrastructure Week, we're on the cusp of an infrastructure decade that I truly believe will transform America.
Tennessee's Bill Hagerty voted no.
They call the infrastructure bipartisan, but...
I think what it reveals is the strategy deployed by the majority leader. He wanted to put the patina of bipartisanship on this initial package. He wanted to create a series of actions. He wanted to create a series of, of actions, real momentum toward this 3.5 trillion dollar spending spree. That's gonna be a debt bomb for America.
The infrastructure measure heads to the House, but Speaker Nancy Pelosi won't allow a vote until the Senate passes that 3.5.
By the way, this is actually solid. Like what Nancy Pelosi is doing right now is solid, is very solid. Like refusing to, I mean, this is what Joe Biden was talking about. This is what the Democrats signaled that they were going to do. It's not gonna happen, I don't think, but uh, I mean, they're, they're not gonna hold out. They're not gonna hold out, but. You know, it's uh, it's a good play. It's perhaps the only play at this point.
Create a series of, of actions, real momentum toward this 3.5 trillion dollar spending spree. That's gonna be a debt bomb for America.
The infrastructure measure heads to the.
Dude, shut the fuck up dude. A debt bomb for America. Suck my fucking cock, you stupid bitch. A debt bomb. It's only a debt bomb when it comes to spending money for just America's citizens, okay? It's a debt bomb when it's building a fucking road. It's a debt bomb when it's expanding Medicare. Suck my cock. It's never a debt bomb when it's a real bomb that we're, we're fucking spending a trillion dollars on just on R and D. So that like, you know, we find new and interesting ways of blowing up fucking uh, school kids in Yemen. That's never a debt bomb. It's a debt bomb when it's a fucking road. Our entire infrastructure is in a fucking state of disrepair. Okay, we're the wealthiest nation on earth. We don't have fucking roads that trucks can reliably drive over. It's like, eh, when I'm at the debt bomb. I fucking despise these people. I would literally jail every politician. I, I've, I've completely lost it dude. You're, you're invested. Here, I'll use capitalist terminology. You are literally re-appropriating capital that you have accumulated or taking out debt, let's say, okay? Even though you have the infinite money glitch by being America alone, whatever. You're reinvesting that into your business, okay? Into the infrastructure, into the bare bones, the skeleton of your business. It is necessity for growth. It is an absolute necessity for growth, okay? God damn it dude. Speaking of which, I still haven't gotten my FEMA alert. I'm probably gonna die, okay? Now that I know if there was something catastrophic happening, I would just not know about it. Cause FEMA has taken me off the call list. You know what's hilarious? Other so-called leftists will come out and have something to complain about despite them's actually using strategy to get the infrastructure bill though. Just watch. Who cares dude? Then don't watch those people, okay? I, I like, it doesn't matter. You're like hypothesizing and getting angry about what like leftists will say. Like it's such a wild thing to be upset about. Okay, I'm trying the watermelon flavor of this yerba mate. I'm having yerba mate. Pretty god dang good.
The House, but Speaker Nancy Pelosi won't allow a vote until the Senate passes that 3.5 trillion dollar budget bill.
The total vision is about not only building physical infrastructure, but building human infrastructure.
Anyway, uh, there's actually a reason FEMA takes people off the list for not running ad breaks at the top of the hour. Fuck you. I mean, fuck you. You, you just took that from me, okay? I should have never read that. I really thought you were gonna give me like insight into why.
Now to Florida.
Why that happens. Okay, before we move on to the mask shit, uh, let's see what uh, the really, the actually important people had to say about the infrastructure bill as in Lord Joe Manchin. Okay, but before I do that, obviously, uh, it is top of the fucking hour. Uh, which means that uh, there's a six second ad break coming. This is the first of the day. If you'd like to no longer see the ads, all you need to do is subscribe. You can do it for five dollars or for free with a Twitch Prime. You can use an app block or a VPN, but Twitch Prime is free. So uh, here's the one minute ad break now. I think there's only Mike from PA and Dancy that will see this and complain. What? Do you remember the Republicans that China is expanding infrastructure like crazy? Their brains will panic and fry and be 100% for it? Yeah, I know. The Progressive Caucus is already like up the ass of Nancy Pelosi and everyone else saying like, like, listen, we won't fucking vote for this. The, uh, the, the Progressive Caucus members will not support a bipartisan bill without the bold reconciliation bill uh, passing through uh, uh, the Senate, so. Pretty fucking solid. Uh, we talked about this yesterday. I still don't think it'll be, it'll work, but who knows? I want them to prove me wrong. Anyway, um. Eight out of ten moderate Dems are saying they won't vote for the 3.5 trillion plan if the 1.2 trillion doesn't get a vote right away. Well, I mean, they're not gonna vote for it anyway. They're doing the Republican tactic. So here's what Joe Manchin had to say, okay? Hold on. Early this morning, I voted yes on a procedural vote. To move forward on a budget reconciliation process because I believe it is most important to discuss the fiscal policy future of this country. However, I have serious concerns about the grave consequences of facing West Virginians and every American family if Congress decides to spend another 3.5 trillion dollars. Over the past year, Congress has injected more than five trillion of stimulus into the American economy. I wonder why that happened. I wonder which president did that and for what reason? To respond to the pandemic, never mind, he mentions it. The challenge we now face is different. Millions of jobs remain unfilled across the country and rising inflation rates are now an unavoidable tax on the wages and income of every American. You know, a way to combat inflation, of course, is also taxing and raising the interest rates, but uh, he won't do that, obviously. There are not indicate, these are not indications of an economy that requires trillions in additional spending. Every elected leader is chosen to make difficult decisions. Adding trillions of dollars more to nearly twenty-nine trillion dollars of national debt without any consideration of the negative effects of our children and grandchildren is one of those decisions that has become far too easy in Washington. Given the current state of the economic recovery, it is simply irresponsible to continue spending at levels more suited to respond to a great depression or a great recession, not an economy that's on the verge of overheating. More importantly, I firmly believe that continuing to spend at an irrespons- at irresponsible levels puts our, puts at risk our nation's ability to respond to the unforeseen crises our country could face. Like what? I urge my colleagues to seriously consider this reality as this budget process unfolds in the coming weeks and months. Put Joe Manchin on a spaceship to fucking Mars dude. One-way ticket. Don't come back. I'm overheating just thinking about like the, the, the many dog whistles that Republicans use. What? I did not hear what the dono said. Azan, what the, what about the inflation? Is that not gonna fuck us in the future? Yeah, we're in a crisis now and have been for eighteen months, but what if a new crisis shows up? So the problem here, the problem here is that the fucking country roads in West Virginia are in a state of disrepair, okay? I don't know what John Denver would think about the current state of the country roads, but let me tell you something, okay? Mountain Mama, Take Me Home, you're not going home. You can't get the, the home because the roads are fucked, okay? And guess what? The elderly are fucked at home. They're not getting enough care. The children are fucked. They're not getting enough care either. You understand? There's no home to begin with. What's idiotic about this inflation shit or the debt is that there are measures built in to this 3.5 trillion dollar spending package. Okay, that would actually, at the very least, pay for a, a, a sizable sum in, in way, way more significant ways than like the tax breaks ever did, right? Cause tax cuts for the wealthy and corporations that Donald Trump uh, pushed for in his administration exclusively fucking ballooned our debt. There was no counter to that. That's just what tax cuts do. But that wasn't a problem then, okay? The problem, on the other hand, is that they also don't want to tax the wealthy and corporations. That's the real problem. This song is actually written about the state of Maryland. West Virginia just had the right number of syllables for the song. Check the Wiki page lol. I have Discord bubbles. Wait, what? Shut the fuck up, Maryland. Just talk about your flag. Yeah, this is the same guy that Exxon lobbyists literally routinely joke about having uh, in their pocket. Here are some legal documents that show Manchin has stakes in companies that pay less than fifteen dollars an hour. Manchin also urged big money donors with no labels to talk to Senator Roy Blunt about flipping his vote on the commission in order to save the filibuster. Like he himself is, uh, we, we talked about this before when it happened, uh, thanks to the coverage of Ryan Grim and Lee Fong at The Intercept, like. He very openly has talked about, uh, you know, how he could whip a certain way. Uh, Jonathan Larson, uh, shows legal documents show Manchin has stakes in companies that pay less than fifteen dollars an hour. Obviously, that would be a problem for uh, Joe Manchin at fifteen dollar uh, minimum wage, uh, minimum wage was increased to uh, fifteen dollars an hour. And lastly, uh, he was, uh, Republicans were caught on hidden camera praising Manchin and Sinema for obstructing the Democrats. Let's watch that. This is uh, David Dole, Rational National. He's great, uh, great uh, left-wing commentator on YouTube. Let's watch what uh, Rick Santorum, do not Google Rick Santorum. It is a sex act. Do not Google it. You do not want to see that. Did you read about the pharma company? His daughter is an exec at? Yes, of course I know about the fucking pharma company that Joe Manchin's daughter used to be an executive at. Alright.
Thank you. Seriously. Call Kirsten Sinema and say thank you.
GOP lawmakers.
Thank you, David Dole. Let's watch the rest of this video because I want to quickly get through this.
Bunch of people running around particularly progressives, well, all they want to talk about is, well, let the people's will be done. No! No, no, no. We don't want the people's will to be done immediately because you have the passions of the majority that, that remember our, our constitution was set up to protect who? Minority rights, not the majority rights.
But the reality is.
And the real minority is billionaires, obviously. Rick Santorum is correct. Who's the biggest minority in this country? And by that, I mean like, who's the most minor of the minority? You know what I mean? Like billionaires. There are unfortunately a very tiny percentage of them. I mean, the 1% of the 1%, it's in the name. And that's what the constitution is here to protect.
Is they are pushing as far as they can. Fortunately for us, the filibuster still is in effect in the Senate. Without that, we would be dead meat and this thing would be, then, then we'd be having a little bit more frantic discussion than we're having today, but thank goodness for Sinema and.
They keep saying billionaire. They keep saying rich. They keep saying wealthy. Instead, they should be saying POM, people of means or POW, prisoner of war, but also people of wealth. Okay, you say BIPOC, it's not, POC is not good enough anymore. Now you gotta say BIPOC. Why can't we say POM? Why can't we say POW? That's right. People are out here saying the B word, billionaire. They're saying the M word loosely now, millionaire. Oh God. That's right. The true oppressed minorities. We need to care about them.
And, and Joe Manchin. I like it when AOC is going after Joe Manchin. Like this is great, this is great for me. You know, it makes my job easier as a conservative because you know, I can go to Joe Manchin or, or, or Kirsten, uh, Sinema and be like, hey guys, you know, and I'm really sorry you're having to go through that. That's, that's just a shame. Nobody should just be, nobody should be treated like this. I, I just really thank you for standing for the country. And you know, all of you in this room, people at home on Zoom, let me tell you right now, if you want to do one thing to, to keep the republic afloat, call Joe Manchin's office. Call Kirsten Sinema's off, Kirsten Sinema's office. Be polite, smile as you talk on the phone. You know, if you talk on the phone with a smile, your voice sounds better. You just be like, hi, I'm here to talk to Senator Joe Manchin and thank him for keeping the filibuster intact. I'm, you know, I'm just a Republican voter from X, from state X, doesn't matter, but I just want to say thank you. Because what's happening up here is the fact that they've decided not to blow up in a filibuster in a lot of respects is gonna save the republic from the worst things that the left wants to do. And HR1 is the tip of the iceberg.
So we just gotta hold the line right now, keeping the filibuster's big part of that and all the other elements that I know y'all are discussing this week.
It's a lot easier to pass giveaways than it is to take them away. And everybody thinks, oh, well, we don't.
That's literally, I mean, he's right. And that's kind of the heart of the truth there. Cause when you pass the giveaways, it's very hard to fucking take it back. Like good luck trying to advocate to eradicate the NHS in the UK. It's not gonna happen. Good luck trying to take away socialized healthcare in Canada. It's not gonna happen. Good luck trying to take away social security in this country. It is a deeply irresponsible and incredibly unpopular thing. Medicare, everybody loves Medicare, okay? And people who are on Medicare fucking vote. Important constituency for both parties. So they know that these policies are popular. They know that these policies would demand tax hikes and they don't want that. They want to make sure that their main constituents, not you, not me, not the average Joe, not the working class, but the billionaires, millionaires and wealthy corporations continue to make money off of the government's ineptitude and lack of interest in covering certain parts of people's uh, immediate needs and amenities that other comparable OECD nations unconditionally offer to their citizens. That's how it works. You dot, dot, dot working class. That's why I said me, you, average Joes. It was a big fucking, uh, it was a big umbrella, you fucking idiot. Go ahead, go ahead, you fucking slave to capital. Go ahead dude. Oh, I can't believe it. You're making a lot of money. You shouldn't advocate for me. Okay dude, fuck it. Come be my slave then. How about that? I'm gonna enslave your family now, you fucking idiot. If you're that much of a cuck. This is like so dumb. No, shut up. I like being a wage slave. You for Gourd to actually click the run ads button dude? No, I didn't. I, I did. But it's not as a working class. What's he doing right now? Dude, accruing capital. That's how it works. These are, these are stocks. You guys are actually, uh, you guys are actually accumulating you know, subscri- subscriptions uh, that you guys give me, the five dollars subscriptions that you guys give me or Twitch primes that you give me are actually just uh, pre-existing capital that's accumulating. None of you are real. You're just fucking uh, actual numbers. This is the stock market. I'm currently trading.
No, we'll just take them away. No, we won't. No, we won't. So please, if any of you have any thoughts about the idea that a filibuster removal, it was a good deal. And I know the previous president was for it and still is. It's a bad idea. Call Joe Manchin and say thank you. Seriously. Call Kirsten Sinema and say thank you.
So that of course is just further confirmation of what we are.
There is like, not even any reason to do commentary over this. I mean, no disrespect to David. His videos are great, but you guys check his channel out, but like, that's it, like. It's literally perfect. Like it's just, you don't need additional information. you don't need additional information. Like they're basically telling you what the deal is. Some dad murdered his two kids from my hometown down in Mexico. New JCS video might come from that in the future. I like that. I love that, dude. Hey, uh, there was a murder that happened in my hometown. Very excited to look forward to the JCS video that we might watch together on, on stream. Oh, fuck, dude. Anyway, that's where we're at. And we know that Joe Manchin is the dog of the fucking, uh, uh, he's the dog of the oil lobby. He's a fucking piece of shit. Most of what he advocates for doesn't make sense because they would be incredibly helpful for the people of West Virginia. Increasing the minimum wage to $15 an hour is literally incredibly popular. Incredibly popular in West Virginia, uh, over 60% popularity and he still yielded that. It's just, he's not like, he, he's not working for West Virginia. He's not working for Americans. He's working for Joe Manchin.
70% of Americans support creating a pathway to citizenship for TPS holders, for dreamers and farm workers. That includes a majority of Democrats and Republicans and independents. Colleagues, right now, we have an opportunity to provide stability and security for the very workforce that the Department of Homeland Security, beginning during the Trump administration, has deemed essential to our nation's economy and security. So as we write a reconciliation bill to create an equitable and sustainable economic recovery, we must include immigration reform. 70%.
True. And by the way, that has consistently been a number that is incredibly popular. Thank you, Alex Padilla. I mean, he's alright. Better than, uh, the rest of California is like major politicians with the exception of Katie Porter, who I like. So he's not, he's not great. But he's not. Not bad either. I know, guys, I know it's Padilla. Okay, I know. Rokana, don't get me started on Rokana. Okay, I got, I got, uh, mixed feelings on Rokana. Alright, so that's where we're at right now. We're waiting on, you know, Joe Manchin and the 10 moderates in the Democratic Party, uh, with like Kirsten Sinema, uh, Hassan. This is another one. I forget the other, like, there's like fucking, there's a bunch of these like greedy mouth breathing, uh, you know, vampire fucks. Yes, Pago Azan, yes, Pago Senator Azan. Uh, that are like just waiting. They're chomping at the fucking bits. Waiting for any opportunity to put their, uh, name out there to do like their personal branding as the spoiler for, uh, any sort of progress. Great system, works well, works incredible. Azan is a greedy, mouth breathing vampire fuck. Yes. Looks like an alien from Mars attack. Act, 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 what? Okay, anyway, let's, let's see, uh, what's going on and hog watch. We're back on hog watch, baby. Florida schools are reopening amid the COVID surge and there is now debate over mask usage at schools. Oh, the other thing I was going to say is Nobel, uh, uh, winning, you know, neoliberal, or I guess like he's more of a social democrat than neoliberal. I bet he's neoliberal. Nobel laureate op ed columnist Paul Krugman had something to say about the fucking inflation and the heat. Okay? Oh, for God's sake, he says, do the math, people. GDP will be 300 trillion over the next decade, 3.5 trillion partially paid for with tax hikes. And much of it expanded the economy's capacity isn't an inflation threat. You know what's really funny about this? You know what's really funny about, uh, this entire like convoluted process is that the capitalists are upset that the government is doing capitalism. Like a debtor's economy is at the foundation of growth under, uh, under capitalism. Like this is, and if you are generating 300 fucking trillion dollars, then like debt to the magnitude of 3.5 is nothing. Even 20 trillion or the ballooning debt is like literally nothing. In comparison to the average revenue that you're generating, like every single fucking company, every single fucking company operates this way. They know that already. They are like everyone that defends this system. Everyone that defends the system understands that this is what major corporations do regularly. But when the government does it, it's like, well, hold on, hold on now. And even then they actually don't have a problem with it as a matter of fact. They literally don't have a problem with it when it comes to military spending. Right? But they only have a problem with it. They only have a problem with it when it comes to like actual spending that will at least, uh, as a secondary impact, uh, affect the average Americans on a positive, uh, way. But companies go bankrupt, the government can't. That would be disastrous. First of all, when you're at a, when you're of a certain size of company, you literally can't go bankrupt. And the reason why you can't go bankrupt is because of the government and the government operates on that, uh, on that same playing field, like the United States of America is not going bankrupt. You're fucking idiot, dude. What is this, the 90s? Do we really have like that mentality now? Again, we're going back to like debt hawking, which is bullshit. Like it was literally proven to be bullshit. No one cares, except for I guess Democrats who suck. Except that debt is literally not being paid down. It's only increasing. It's literally that same kind of private debt corporations have. Yeah, but it doesn't matter. It just does not matter. It, it does not, does not, does not matter. Yeah, dude. Remember how I just said there are corporations that are too big to fucking fail? Remember how I said, remember how I mentioned there's corporations that are too big to fail? So the American government literally makes sure that they still survive regardless of how much debt they have? We are the too big to fail country. Yeah, Boeing is an example of this. Who would collect that debt? China. Anyway. Name another too big to fail country for reference. There really aren't. There is not another country like the United States of America. We, we are in control, like our currency is in control of like 80% of every financial fucking transaction. Like there are European countries that are still as important, but even they could fucking go bankrupt. We are literally the most, like, nothing comes near us, dude. Nothing. The entire global economy revolves around us. The USD is literally the petrodollar. Nothing has changed that anytime soon. Yeah, I mean, every, every currency is still, is still, uh, directed off the USD. No matter how big a superpower, no matter how big a superpower they may be. Like the United States going under would imply that the entire world's economy is falling apart. Okay, that's just what that means. That's literally all that means. So if you have another 2008, good luck lol. Only tangentially related, but a lot of EU countries fa- uh, finished paying their Marshall Plan loans in the 2000, which is insane. What? Wall Street is doing the same shit they did in 2008, but now they're repatching worthless stocks, shorting them to oblivion, reverse repos are over 1 trillion a day. The US Treasury is approaching zero. Inflation has gone up dramatically in the last six months. Anyway. What if the world switches to China's currency? It's, it's that the only time the US debt would mean anything? Yeah, but that's not going to fucking happen. Or at least anytime soon. Bro, China uses US currency. What the fuck, dude? Like, what are you talking about, dude? Anyway, let's just, let's just move on from this. And let's get to hog watch. China pegs its exchange rate to the dollar. They literally manipulate their exchange rate.
To school yesterday despite skyrocketing COVID numbers. Cases among children and teenagers are up nearly 400% in the state from this time last year, 400%. The state's second largest school district is now defying the governor's ban on mask mandates and requiring all students and teachers to.
Big Burger made a video about me? Oh, no, it's not.
Mask up. Manuel Bohorquez has more from Miami.
I'm trying to encourage everybody to please take this Delta variant very seriously due to the.
He's a liar. She's wearing doctor's robes. You know who else wears doctor robes? Only chiropractors and holistic medicine specialists are supposed to be wearing doctor's robes. That only then do I believe them. When a doctor is wearing doctor's robes and telling me things I don't want to hear, I don't believe them.
Transmissibility. It is incredibly contagious and our children are getting sick. I can't do this.
Pediatric doctor Pia Myers got emotional as she recorded a video message for the public about the challenges in Collier County. Florida leads the nation in pediatric hospitalizations with more than 300 reported in the last week. Children now account for nearly 15% of all new infections nationwide. That's why the American Academy of Pediatrics is.
That was not funny. I don't know why I laughed or I was not laughing. And anyone who says I was laughing is a liar and I don't want to hear from them. That was not a funny situation at all. Okay?
Pushing the FDA to approve the vaccine for kids ages five to 11. Dr. Yvonne Maldonado is the organization's chair of infectious diseases.
Do you fear what will happen in a state like Florida as schools begin?
Well, we see what's already happening in Florida. We don't want that to happen in schools.
We love teachers.
Protests erupted on both sides in Florida after the governor banned schools from requiring masks and even threatened the salaries of superintendents and school board members who defied him.
My view is it's a parent's decision. If you believe in, uh, the masking during the school, you're free to do it.
But that didn't stop.
It's like insane, dude. Yeah, we're going to watch the school board meeting in Tennessee in a sec.
Broward County, the state's second largest school district, for voting Tuesday to require masks.
I can die if people do not have their mask on.
I don't feel comfortable with my son having to go into school and having to wear a mask the entire day, five days a week.
Our educators in the state of Florida, they are going to be there for the kids as they have always done.
Andrew Spar is president of the Florida Education Association. For him, it's personal. His wife is a public school teacher and his youngest daughter is entering seventh grade.
I'm concerned about my daughter who is vaccinated and will be wearing a mask. Um, and, and the fact that there will be others who are not vaccinated and are not wearing their mask. And so we want to make sure that everyone is safe.
There is some encouraging news when it comes to vaccinations across the country. According to the CDC, the pace of first doses is nearly double what it was 30 days ago. Tony?
Could be a lesson learned there. Manny, thank you very much.
Meanwhile, tonight.
Okay, uh, and that's not all, of course. I want to show you guys where the hogs are at, okay? The hogs are going buck wild, folks. Here is the parking lot of a school after a school board meeting last night in Franklin, the wealthiest place in Tennessee. Parents are harassing medical professionals who had spoken in favor of masks in schools. Let's see what they had to say. He said, you have a place in hell. Why does this doctor have a place in hell? Because he's saying like, schools should implement mask wearing for kids. That dude with the mohawk does not have a kid. Okay, no shot. You will not ever convince me that a man with a mohawk like that has ever had a child. Okay, I just don't believe it. I don't believe it. Here come, here come the fucking, uh, you know, the actual, uh, information, you know, he's got, let me tell you something, folks. The anti-masker guy, he's got his own set of facts that he's operating on. You know, you're sucking down bacteria when you have the mask on. Also, a mask is not even worthwhile because like particles get through, but also they, they're trapped. For some reason, particles can get through, but they also then get trapped. They can't get out, but they get through. It's always great, like, it's always fucking awesome when they, when they say stuff like that where it's like, masks don't even work because particles get through. But then also particles stay in when you're trying to, when you have bacteria. Particles get through, but also I can't breathe in it. Like, okay. So what, which is it? Like, are particles getting through or is it impossible for you to breathe when you're fucking, uh, wearing a mask? Both at the same time. I don't know. I'm fucking angry.
No more masks.
Keep it calm. Keep it calm.
No more masks.
We're on these guys' side. They're on our side.
No, they're not. They're not on our side.
The police are on our side. The police are on our side. Let's calm down. Calm down. We know who you are.
This is my favorite guy here because he's the peaceful guy, right? He's the fucking peaceful guy who's like, the police are on our side. Calm down. Also. He's like, let's be, let's be civil here. Let's be calm. And then turns to the fucking medical professional and is like, I will fucking murder you. I know where you live. Oh, okay, man. Thanks. Like, calm down, calm down, calm down. Here's how you actually threaten someone. Literally, uh, uh, threatening them in front of the cops. Yeah, that doesn't mean anything. You know that, right? Because cops themselves are hogs for the most part. An overwhelming majority, an overwhelming majority of cops are Republicans, like they're Republican voters. Uh, or even funnier, a larger percentage, uh, than Democrats are libertarians. Like, it goes, it goes Republican, like libertarian, independent, and then Democrat. And the Democrat minority is like incredibly tiny, right? In the United States of America, and there's a reason for that, for obvious, uh, there's obvious reasons for that. I love libertarian cops though. It's the funniest because like, dude, you're literally like, you are the, the vessel that enacts the incredibly authoritarian monopoly that the state has on violence. Like you are the arm that comes down. the incredibly authoritarian monopoly that the state has on violence, like you are the arm that comes down upon the masses, like you're literally supposed to be the opposite, like libertarians are supposed to fucking hate, uh, cops. Anyway, so... That's, that's wonderful, but like the reason why cops don't do shit here is because like, they don't wanna wear masks either. Yes, the most repressive state apparatus. Wait, so, I don't know what the laws are in Tennessee, but can he just drive over these people? I wonder what would happen if he drove over the people that, uh, that literally threatened his life and were, you know, piling on the car. "I'm a parent, oh well, please come stab this doctor then, I didn't know you had children," yeah, that's, that's how it works, guys. Didn't you know? If you're a parent, you're allowed to do that to doctors. So... This is wonderful, obviously, we don't know if all those people that were there were like actually fucking parents. Okay? 'Cause there are definitely, there are definitely, uh, a case of like, parents that don't even have kids in that school district going to, uh, said schools to just yell. Uh, one example of which of course is Matt Walsh, some people were telling me he does have some kids that are at that school, but uh, psychopathic, uh, psychopathic Daily Wire commentator Matt Walsh had this to say, he went to a separate Nashville school board meeting, I don't know if he was at that one. But yeah, he said, "As a concerned community member, I just attended the Nashville school board meeting to speak out against the mask mandates. Lots of angry parents here. We all need to rally in our own communities against this madness." Well, where do, where does Matt Walsh's children, where, where do they get schooled? Oh, yeah, he homeschools them. So, did Matt Walsh go to the living room to protest? No, he went to another school. Where his children don't even fucking go to. Like, he, he's literally just a crisis actor dude. He's just like, he's just bored, like this is what it is, he's just fucking bored. Infrared, Hassan doesn't know anything about Marxism, 179 views, he says he's not wrong, dummyed. Should I ban him? I should ban him, seven month subscriber. Pepe la, pepe la. There you go, man. Thanks, thanks for your participation for the, over the course of the past seven months. Will not be able to get your $35 back, but you can suck my entire cock. Anyway. I'm from Franklin, I went to Williamson County Schools, the anti-mask rhetoric is prevalent among parents there? Dude, if you're gonna come in here and promote your like, you know, uh, personal spice or seasoning of like Marxist-Leninism or whatever the fuck, or your own fucking influencer that you're caping for, you know, let me, uh, let me make it easier for you, go watch that guy instead. Why the fuck are you in here? You know? Anyway, let's keep going. It's the strangest thing. This attitude is incredible, going back to, going back to Matt Walsh. This attitude is incredible. Like you don't even go here, what the fuck are you doing? Right? But it doesn't matter, it doesn't stop Republicans from like engaging in this sort of action because they wanna have fun, this is like fun for them. Okay? And... The energy here is so similar to like knocking on people's doors in a random neighborhood and being like, "Well, the homeowners association here says that like, you have leaves on your front yard and that's a, that's a violation of the homeowners association rules," it's like, "Bitch, you don't live here!" "The fuck do you mean it's a violation of the homeowners association?" It's like, "Get the fuck out of here dude!" You can't do that, you can't do that, it's like, shut the fuck up!
Matt Walsh is a psychopath.
Anyway. Notice how he says concerned community member, uh, community member and not as a parent? Yeah, he's, he did that on purpose. Concerned community member, concern yourself dumbass, you're already fucking brain-rotting your children, okay? You've already, you've already destroyed the minds of your kids, what the fuck is wrong with you? Crisis actor ass. Ah, anyway, he's literally a Christian fascist, I know, that's what he fancies himself as. So, uh, yeah, CD Hook says, "Can't emphasize enough how much it distorts public policy that only the craziest people show up for open meetings. Every meeting of a school board or city council needs a panel of 12, normal people picked at random to go, yeah, that seems fine." Matt Walsh should not be allowed near schools, okay? You just shouldn't be allowed. And some people were in my fucking response, uh, some people were in my replies being like, "He pays taxes in that community, you should be able to go there," like... It's so fucking insane dude. It's literally insane. It's an actually insane take, it's like, "Yeah, I pay taxes, so now I'm actually gonna go to the school board meeting, okay, in my district and be like, we should be able to have guns. Give all the kids guns, I pay taxes here. I pay taxes here, so I, I think that like all of these kids should be able to have a Glock when they're going to fucking school." Oh, never mind dude. No, seriously dude, I pay taxes? Los Angeles, oh shit, Los Angeles School Board. I pay taxes here. Every kid should bring a Glock to school, that's why they're dangerous by the way, it's not a real gun, it's airsoft gun. Anyway. Wait, San Antonio? Oh my god, what the fuck is this? Okay, wait, hold on. "San Antonio has put out a temporary restraining order against Governor Greg Abbott, paving the waiver decisions guided by public health professionals. As such, our local health authorities issued a directive requiring masks inside all public K through 12 schools in Behar County." That's awesome. That's, that's fucking dope dude. It's so dumb. Anyway. That's where we're at dude. Let's see, shouting match over mask debate and heated school board meeting in Henry County.
The Henry County School Board is tightening COVID protocols to handle a surge in cases, and some parents had a lot to say about what this means for masks in classrooms.
I gotta pee.
John Shurek was there for the yelling and shouting.
A shouting match over masks, parents on both sides of the mask debate, here to speak their minds to the Henry County School Board. But Henry County School Superintendent suddenly canceled the in-person public hearing because the school board had just reinstated tight indoor COVID safety restrictions. The board adjourned the meeting. Only board member Mackenzie Daniels stayed behind to listen, and he got an earful. Parent Sharon Poindexter.
The cowardness that exhibited here, why people leaving, yes, is it a challenging subject to deal with? Yes, but you don't walk out. You don't walk out on the people that pay your bills.
Henry County Schools began the school year last week with a mask optional policy, but late Monday afternoon, the board imposed a mask mandate for all effective immediately because cases and hospitalizations are increasing so rapidly.
We still need to make sure that every mitigation strategy at our disposal should be employed.
I would say if it's enforced and if it's taken seriously, yes, we do feel a little more comfortable.
We were hoping the school board would recognize the fact that it should be the parents' choice whether to muzzle our children or not.
Dude, no! When did we get to a point where like, parents should be making decisions that pertain public health? Like that's so fucking stupid dude, you wanna know why that's stupid? Because you say things like muzzle when you're talking about masks, okay? And I say this as someone who wholeheartedly fucking hates wearing a mask, okay? I really do. You're a fucking idiot, like you should not be making any decisions, you barely have administrative control over your own body. Okay? You probably have to manually breathe half the time because you forget how to do it. And you're over here being like, "I should be doing, I should be making decisions about epidemiology in my neighborhood." If it were up to you, you fucking psycho, we'd all be dead. It's so stupid, like no, where is this entitlement coming from? No dumbass, know your fucking place, okay? I'm not saying that because she's a woman, so don't fucking, you know, misunderstand me. I'm not like making like a sexist take here. I'm saying that because she's conservative, okay? Know your fucking place conservatives.
The controversy, the uproar continues along with the sharp increases in COVID cases.
Again, masks are now required in all Henry County classrooms as of first thing in the morning. Also, the school system is offering teachers and staff $1,000-
Good job Nasflaw for getting into a university, congratulations.
...each to get vaccinated before the end of September. Jennifer.
All right, John, a very testy situation out there tonight, thank you.
Deputy, can you please escort the man in the back out, please, thank you, with the clipboard, thank you.
Chaos at a school board meeting over masks as the Williamson County School Board votes to have elementary school children wear masks in class at least until September 21st.
As you see deputies had escorted at least one man from that contentious meeting this evening, dozens of parents followed after yelling at the school board to not make any mask mandatory, some even threatening lawsuits, and again just-
In a weird way, we deserve this because like, part of the reason why this happens to begin with is because there are no significant material differences in policies between either party that's in control at any given moment. So we have to hyper-focus on like these dumbass issues as like culture war issues to draw party lines over. Okay? Like I hate to bring this back to the Democratic Party a little bit, and I know people are gonna get fucking triggered when I say this, but like if the Democratic Party regularly and routinely had like, a different policy opinion on how things should, uh, happen, and like was advocating for actual material changes and whatnot, then the Republicans could at the very least like turn around and be like, "No, we're different than that, we don't want infrastructure," which they kinda do, but they rarely ever, we rarely ever talk about those significant differences, we get caught up in the dumbass culture war shit about like mask-wearing and whatnot because it's a, it's an issue, it's an issue that, that is completely manufactured. And both sides absolutely benefit from this. This is how you show to the rest of the, it's the rest of your countrymen, what team you're on, you know what I mean? "Oh, I'm on the mask-wearing team." "I'm not on the mask-wearing team, fuck wearing a mask, I'm, I'm Mr. Liberty," and by the way, I'm not saying either side, uh, is equally correct or anything like that. Very clearly, measures that epidemiologists are suggesting and doctors are suggesting is the correct measure. But the, the sheer reason why we even have a, a culture war issue around this is because like Republicans will latch on to any dumbass idea if it makes them look like they're against libs and owning the libs. You know what I'm saying? QAnon, protecting the children is so important, we need to create a coup de reste control of the American government for the kids, also QAnon, yeah. "Wearing a mask is a muzzle brother, we need to, you know, start killing doctors that tell you you should wear a mask," what the fuck? Great.
Moments ago, that vote, wanna get right out to News Channel 5's Kelsey Gibbs, who was there for the heated meeting. Kelsey, what's the latest?
Hey Rory, yeah, just wrapped up in your four-hour meeting, but Williamson County Superintendent Jason Golden recommended to the board that students and staff at the elementary level will be required to wear masks. Now several people, as you heard there, immediately booed, even some yelling coward. Now, at the start of this year, only three days in, 25 elementary students have contracted COVID-19, and many doctors and parents have been very vocal about asking the board to reinstate the mandate, others asked to keep the district's initial decision of making masks optional.
They are more likely to be struck by lightning, they are more likely to be struck by lightning, they are more likely to die of the seasonal flu. Have any of you ever mandated masks for the seasonal flu? Well, shame on you, because every kid in Williamson County Schools has been under more danger from the seasonal flu every year than they are for COVID.
It's like you were throwing a large chicken pox party with our children, only the stakes are incredibly higher. How can you not prioritize the life of the child? This is unconscionable.
Okay, first of all, it's not the fucking kids. There's a couple different problems here, okay? One, the Delta variant and potential new variants that keep popping up as a consequence of like not reaching herd immunity, which seems impossible to reach now, uh, might actually fucking eviscerate our kids, okay? We don't know what's going to end up happening. The Delta variant has also impacted children, alright, there's definitely a, a higher number of kids that are getting impacted by the Delta variant, or higher number of younger, uh, people getting impacted by the Delta variant, uh, especially unvaccinated ones than, uh, than the original variant. Okay? Secondly, and more importantly, it's also literally about the fucking adults. It's not just about the kids, it's also about the adults. I have a, I don't know, I, I feel like I have a different approach on this, people will probably get mad at me like, but I wish we just had, you know, I wish we would start fucking enforcing, uh, vax mandates at schools. So that we wouldn't have to deal with this anymore, because like kids wearing masks, masks are fucking annoying. There's evidence now that shows that the Moderna vax is only about 74% effective against Delta while Pfizer's 45, that's not true. I'm so mad at Axios and all these other fucking publications that literally immediately report on any sort of like unsubstantiated study that we haven't even fucking peer-reviewed yet, okay? That's bullshit man, that's literally not fucking true. And even that Axios article that you fucking only read the headline of, that you immediately dropped in here, personally, one, admits that this study might be fucking faulty, and two, still shows that the efficacy rating for, uh, for preventing the worst symptoms is incredibly fucking high. I'll never let my fucking three-year-old get a COVID vaccine, we don't know what it'll do to, to them years from now. First of all, yeah, don't make your three-year-old get a fucking COVID vaccine right now, you idiot. Wait until there's FDA approval. No one is trying to get you to fucking vaccinate your three-year-old, secondly, secondly... And more importantly, is your child not already vaccinated for a bunch of other shit that like Americans get vaccinated for? I'm so confused, like, so you're fine with all the other vaccines that like three-year-olds get? Up until the moment that they're three? But then like, this is where you draw the line? I'm so confused. What? An anti-vax nurse injects 8,600 people with saline instead of the COVID vaccine? Oh, this person is going to jail. Oh my god. A German nurse being investigated for allegedly injecting 1,000 people with a placebo instead of a coronavirus vaccine. Based on witness testimony, police investigator Peter Beer said that there was a reasonable suspicion that the rogue medical professional administered shots of saline solution up to 8,600 patients. Oh my god. It's unknown whether the shot blocker, reportedly a Red Cross nurse, had injected people with blanks. However, she had reportedly broadcast anti-vax views on social media. While the faux jab was harmless, it may have disproportionately affected elderly people who are at a greater risk of contracting the virus. Oh my god. Oh my god. Oh my fucking god. That's literally murder if people died. Oh my fucking god, dude. We need to throw anti-vaxers in jail immediately. Like, that person has to be in jail, right? They... That's, that's so psychotic. The District of Friesland will do everything possible to ensure that the affected people receive their vaccination protection as soon as possible. Unfortunately, the nurse isn't the first medical practitioner with express anti-vax views. In June, a Texas hospital suspended 178 employees for two weeks without pay for refusing to get the COVID vaccine. I mean, maybe it's not real. I, I wanna hope it's not real. It's just the New York Post, right? Please. Oh fuck, Reuters reported on it too. Oh no. Oh no. Franklin video of my favorite chud sign? This is the same school district in Franklin. I wanna see the ma- I mean, those signs are pretty normal. My husband cream pied me eight years ago, so I get to make public health policies for the local school. Is education, if education was universal, people would be smart enough to know better about a lot of things? My child, my choice. I don't understand anti-mask. Why people are anti-mask, please? Uh, it's a nuisance. "Oh, the second disruption on a video only moments later. I'll see you in court," the woman vowed. Lots of legal threats tonight of lawsuits. "I don't care what ye vote, my kids will not be as masked as Obama as an Ob-" "Oh, my kids will be as masked as an Obama B-day." There you go. Watch the video of Matt Walsh speaking at the school. Wait, does anyone have the video? I wanna see it. Don't you see kids are choking in school with the mandatory mask-wearing, just like the top of the hour ad break coming soon? It's two in a row today, dude. I'm fucking, I'm ending the stream if I get caught a third time. That's, that's fucked up, dude. Oh my god, dude. Top of the fucking hour, every hour. It's time for a 60-second ad break. God damn, dude, you took something away from me, you understand? The joy I have when I run the top of the hour ad break and I catch you slipping, I catch you off-guard, like, you're ruining this for me, you sons of bitches. Anyway, it's the top of the fucking hour, boys. Uh, you can avoid the ads, of course, by subscribing. You can subscribe for $5 or for free with a Twitch Prime, obviously, or you can use an ad blocker or VPN, even though Twitch Prime is free. If you haven't used it anywhere else, use it here. Uh, here's the ad break now. Who are these people? What, The Verge wants me to fly out to an event? One second. Sorry, I just got a text message from my, uh, from my, uh, agent. Wasn't it The Verge that made that awful, uh, "How to Build Your PC" video? I don't know. "I just typed keg W to my boyfriend in a text message. My brain is fully rotted. Thank you, Hassan." You're welcome. Why don't we just give up our kids and send them to the government, because who cares about how the parents wanna raise them? Okay, let me describe something to you really quickly. You can literally say that about public schools, and if you say that, you're a fucking idiot, okay? But that's already what happens at public schools, you dumb fuck. Like, literally, you're, you're doing that thing that conservatives do, where you like, describe something innocuous and normal, as though it should be a, a cause for skepticism and fear. Wow, dude, imagine leaving your child with other adults that you've never fucking met for 12 hours out of the day? That's crazy. That's so fucked up. Wow, we do that already. Called, you know, sending them to school. We found this clip of Matt Walsh-
I decided that our kids should go to school all day, every day, wearing muzzles like rabid dogs. I have listened to your arguments, and I've noticed that they're missing a few things, namely evidence, data, science, common sense, and basic human decency.
Okay, first and foremost, I just wanna point out that like, this is Matt Walsh, right? Christian, theocratic fascist Matt Walsh. Of the Daily Wire, he himself is not sending his children to this school. He's attending this school board meeting at Nashville Public Schools Board of Education because he's just bored, okay? He's only here to just fucking complain, like a, like a crisis actor that he is. Define fascist? He says he's a Christian fascist.
You presented no facts at all. Uh, so let me do that now. Here they are. COVID poses almost no risk to our kids at all. 4.2 million-
Not true.
-children have tested positive for COVID. A total of 0.008% of them have done. What about the flu? The CDC estimates that 480 kids died from the flu in the 2018-2019 season. That's more than have died from COVID in a year and a half. Now, did anyone on this board suggest at any point that-
Yeah, in a year and a half, when schools were doing distance, uh, distant learning, and literally mask-wearing at like limited capacity. You don't have a single fucking, you don't have a single piece of information on how many kids will potentially die as a consequence of the Delta variant, okay? I wanna also know, like, how many kids did die? It doesn't even fucking matter, but like... Let's see. Data reveals deadliness in COVID night, of COVID-19 even in young adults. Uh, even though the cause mortality due to COVID-19 may not be known for a while, two new studies highlight the excess deaths from March. We already know that. Thousands of COVID deaths in young adults during the first five months of the pandemic. 76,088 all-cause deaths occurred among young adults, with each month showing excess, according to the JAMA research letter. The researchers found that 11,899 more Americans ages 25 through 44 have died than expected, with 4,000 of the deaths caused by COVID-19. The remaining deaths, researchers believe, indicated insufficient amount of COVID-19 detection and reporting in this age group.
My brother is anti-vax, and he's so delusional that he will outright deny science while using his inhaler every day.
Ultimately, as I said before, the main reason for why mask-wearing should happen in schools is not necessarily for kids. But for two reasons, or three reasons. One, the unknown. Unknown if there will be other variants or how the Delta variant will actually impact kids. The secondary unknown reason, that is, um, or I guess there'll be two reasons. One, the fear of the unknown, which is, how will the Delta variant impact kids? And also, will there be secondary variants or, uh, worse variants overall that could impact kids? And two, the fucking adults that are around the kids, okay? Now, one way to get around that is by fucking mandating vaccinations at schools, which is going to happen. Okay? It will happen. Once the FDA delivers full authorization, full-blown authorization for COVID vaccines, which is going to happen according to Fauci in the next two weeks, then there will be more authority, uh, more legal authority by local governments, and also the federal government even, to mandate uh, vaccinations at schools. If the FDA approves, will the age limit drop below 12 years old? I don't know if it will. I don't know yet. I don't think so. Don't they already mandate other vaccines, like you need the measles shot and other things? Yes! And there's a good reason for that. I don't like children wearing masks. I don't like anyone wearing masks. Like, it fucking sucks. It's a nuisance. It's annoying. But, in the absence of herd immunity, it unfortunately feels like a necessity, okay? That's just the reality. It's really not that annoying? Yes, it fucking is. If you're like, wearing a mask all goddamn day, it just sucks. It does. It does suck. The story with the German nurse happened in my hometown. My dad works as a firefighter, so he had more in-depth info from the vaccination center. It's real, but she only admitted to administering a few saline, so there are 8.6,000 people on that day who are at risk of not being vaxxed. Had to confirm before chatting, so it might be a bit late. That's so fucked up. I hope that person rots in fucking prison, dude. What a piece of shit. Anyway. You're just a pussy, lol. I mean, I hate it. Like, I, I hate wearing a mask. I do. You guys know this already. It is fucking annoying. My glasses fog up, especially if I'm doing cardio. My mask gets wet as fuck when I'm at the gym. Most of my anger about mask-wearing revolves around the gym, to be honest. Like, it's just like so fucking bad. I want gyms to be 18-plus and vax mandatory, okay? Pimbo mask complaints, LMAO. Yeah, it just sucks. Uh, it really does. If you, I hate you wearing a mask too. You're too handsome, I'll say, oh, thanks. So... It's not annoying if you have some bare minimum cardio, what? No, dude, what the fuck do you mean? If I'm doing fucking high-intensity interval training and I'm sprinting with a fucking mask on my face, when I'm breathing, the mask is like getting sucked into my face. When I'm sweating a lot, it starts getting wet and cold because the AC is pumping. It fucking sucks. It's a nuisance. It really is. And it wouldn't have to- Your masks are really trash, dude. They suck, but it helps on vax, including kids to help new variants develop? No, what will help new variants, what will stop new variants from developing is literally fucking getting a herd immunity, not like everyone wearing masks. Don't be a fucking idiot, dude. Like, this is so dumb. Like, you act like COVID didn't spread when everyone was fucking wearing a mask with no vaccines in sight. Like, what kind of dumb take is this? It's still fucking spread, non-stop, and people were dying left and right. I don't have a single fucking issue wearing a mask when I'm at the grocery store. I just get annoyed when I'm wearing a mask at the fucking gym. Ridiculous to fucking complain about shit like that. Okay? I have not stopped wearing masks at the grocery stores, like, I have not stopped wearing masks indoors. I think it's kinda weird and dumb that they do it at restaurants, because it's like, you're literally taking it off and eating, and there's no Plexiglas or anything, like, there's no social distancing, so like, what, I, I have to wear a mask when I'm on the way to the fucking bathroom, but like, then I go back and sit down next to a bunch of random people? I don't know how we're like limiting that, but whatever. Like, fuck it, I'll still wear it. Who cares? AC makes my mask cold, first-world problems? Dude, Americans complaining about anything is always gonna be a first-world problem. We are the most spoiled babies on the planet, okay? Yes. We're literally having a conversation about hogs that don't wanna take the vaccine while the rest of the planet is like literally would murder one another just to be able to get our vaccination rate, or our abundance of vaccines readily available for their citizens, okay? So yes, it is literally the definition of a first-world problem. One, because we are the first world, and two, because we're selfish, entitled, dogshit hogs in this country. You are especially spoiled for seriously complaining about this over and over? Yeah, I don't really care, man. You can fucking leave then. Yeah, I'm a brat, okay? Like, I, I literally don't care. I, I, yeah, I know. I, yeah, I'm fucking spoiled. I'm over here busting ass, trying to get fucking people to, to, you know, get vaccinated, but if you're gonna fucking cry about it, then, you know, suck my cock. Yeah, yeah, I'm spoiled, bitch. What's up? America, baby, number one. Now, you're wrong on this one. Without masks, the vaccine, you can spread vaccine strains and worse than things. You need masks and vax until it's beaten down a bit?
That year, that kids wore masks. Did anyone in this room suggest that at any point, anyone wear masks for flu?
You really is a bum, El Mafio. Use your platform to do something else? Complaining about complainers? Oh, you're talking about the other guy.
Flu, which again, is more dangerous to kids than COVID. That's a fact.
Wait, what? That's, wait, what's the more dangerous to kids? Hold on. Oh, he's saying the regular flu is more dangerous to kids than COVID.
But at any point, anyone wear masks for flu, which again, is more dangerous to kids than COVID. That's a fact. Do you know what it's called when you force your children to wear masks for fear of a virus that poses almost no threat to them? It's called child abuse. You wanna look up a disease, look up munchausen by proxy, because that's what this is. If you think I'm exaggerating, then how would you-
What? This is munchausen by proxy? Motherfuckers just Googled, oh my god, I love when idiots Google shit and then they use it all the time. Yeah, dude, it's munchausen by proxy when you're fucking, uh, you know, following, literally following, uh, uh, measures that epidemiologists and doctors are putting forward for spread prevention. Oh my fucking god, dude.
Respond to a parent who forces his kid to wear a football helmet every day, all day, for fear of falling coconuts and meatloafers. Your kid is almost as likely to die of COVID as he is from a rock from the sky, and yet if you saw that, you would say to that parent that he is abusive, that he is forcing his kid to participate in this utterly insane charade in order to satisfy his delusional psychotic hypochondria. Now, do any of you know what sort of psychological damage we do to children by forcing them to cover their faces?
What? The only problem with mask-wearing in schools is, uh, is that like, it might be harmful to sociali, uh, socialization, you know what I mean? Like, socializing kids and shit? But I don't even think there's any- But I don't even think there's any fucking studies conducted on this. Like, this is pure speculation. It's just annoying. That's it. It literally is annoying. It could be harmful for language development and it could be harmful, uh, for social development amongst children. I don't know if there's actual studies on this matter, but what the fuck was going on?
Teaching them that the air is toxic, that everyone around them is sick, depriving them of the ability to see each other's faces. Do you know what kind of damage that does? Have you thought about it? Have you wondered about the health effects of forcing kids to breathe through sweat and-
What's going on with this CC? Bro, this thing fucks up a lot, dude.
And dirt-soaked rags every single day? Are you sure that there are no health risks? Do you know what the effect is on children developmentally? If they're not able to read each other's facial cues? What about learning to read and they can't see the teacher enunciating the words?
What? What, what? Bro, I'm sorry if your fucking dumbass kids are so fucking stupid because they got the stupid gene passed down from you? So they like literally put their fucking mask on their face, but pretty sure you can still see with a mask, dog. He's like, my kids are dumb, dude. I'm sorry. My kids are too fucking stupid. So they put the mask on their face in front of their eyes and they can't see. Also, guess what, dude? Your kids are fucked anyway, is they got, one, you as their father, and two, you're fucking homeschooling them.
What does it do to a child's developing immune system if he has to wear a mask all day, every day? You're satisfied to place this burden on children anyway, and why? It's not to keep them safe. They are safe. It's not to keep the adults safe. They can all get vaccinated if they want. No, you do it to make yourselves feel better and to protect yourselves politically.
Oh, he made, you can't see the teacher's mouth? Oh, no.
The child's mask is a symbolic security line for you.
They were saying you can't see the teacher's mouth moving. I hate to say it, but he has a point. Okay, put a fucking Plexiglas in front of the teacher, and if he's gonna enunciate words, he can pull off the mask and say it. Problem solved. That's not the issue, chatters. You are, if you're hyper focusing on that part, you're missing the point. He's mentioning that specifically because he just doesn't want other kids, other kids wearing a fucking mask at school. Not his kids, because his kids don't go to that school. His kids are homeschooled. Okay? He went to another fucking school board meeting to fucking cry about mask wearing.
It's a disgrace. You shall all be ashamed. Thank you for-
You know, that guy raises some good points. I hate this country sometimes, dude. All right, let's see what DeSantis is saying now.
We put these kids first, and people are gonna look back and they say, you know what? Florida stood by its kids. Some of these other places turned their back on their kids, and we're gonna be, uh, I think, a good example of what you should have done. Make sure that we put these kids first.
Florida loves putting kids first, you know, first in line for pedophiles to snatch them up and, you know, do horrible things to them, but who am I to, who am I to say anything about Florida? I just like to, uh, act like it doesn't exist, you know what I'm saying? Oh, I saw this. I can't, uh, we were gonna watch this later. I guess we'll watch it now. Marx failed to consider Jamila Jamil, Chelsea Handler, and Amy Schumer. Let's hear what they had to say.
Capitalism, and however, however much we may acknowledge the evils of capitalism that do, however much we may all hate capitalism, and however, however much we may acknowledge the evils of capitalism that do exist, currently, money is freedom for women. And I know that that is the dirty and wrong and unsocialist and un-Marxist thing to say, but being able to know that if I have an emergency, I don't have to rely on a man, and that I can make my own decisions, and that I, as a businesswoman, can hire other women and people of color and people from backgrounds that don't always get hired for jobs, gives me freedom ultimately.
Right. There's no answer for this. Yup. Okay. So she's right. Money is freedom. She's right. That does not change, though. Like, the point is, the point is, no matter what the organization of the economy is, everyone else should have that freedom as well that, you know, you enjoy, that I enjoy as a Twitch streamer, okay? That's the point. The freedom to be able to do, uh, fulfilling tasks. The freedom to be able to, uh, you know, take advantage of the endless productivity of technological marvels, technological achievements. Because as it stands, productivity keeps increasing, okay? But wages remain stagnant. So, looking at that, you can go two ways and go, listen, money provides freedom. Okay? Money provides freedom for me. And it does. For me, that is the singular most important reason for, for having money, is fucking freedom. As someone who has, as someone who has experienced the fear of having to fucking budget, uh, and, and get like, you know, manager special chicken, so I can still have a decent amount of protein intake, while living in the fucking frat house kitchen, there is a tremendous amount of freedom that comes from not having to think about those things, because when you don't have money, it occupies every part of your fucking mind and every part of your life. Okay? It's very, very expensive to be poor. And also, when you have no money, money is everything. But when you do have money, then all of a sudden it becomes nothing, right? So, she's not wrong when she says money provides the freedom necessary for survival and, and, uh, it eliminates a lot of the problems that you have. Brittany Renner, Dr. Dre's ex-wife. Wait, what? I don't know what you're saying. But the second part of her point and where she goes with the original point is really dumb. Because she's like, yeah, we hate capitalism, but at least like, under capitalism, I, as a woman of color, can like go hire other queer women of color to work for me with the money. And it's like, what? Like, are you, are you uplifting them by fucking hiring them? No. You're literally still exploiting their labor if you're, you know, depending on how you're operating your own business. Oh god, does only hiring women or POC not count as discrimination? Yeah, dude, you got her. You should subject white men to Jamila Jamil's, uh, fucking, uh, annoying, uh, attitude as well. If anything, it's good. So, the point is this. The point is this. Money offers you freedom. This is true. Money offers you freedom. This is true. But the point of a different, point of, uh, imagining the economy in a different way is to offer those very same liberties to those who generate the value. Okay? So, the, the entire summarization of this argument is capitalism is evil, but it's evil in my favor, so I say keep it. Yes, Othko, you're correct. That's basically what she's saying.
Let's go, let's go, let's go.
Run her up several times. She was not kind at all. All at Arowan lol. Oh my god, you work at Arowan? I'm sorry to hear that, man. I hope the benefits are good at least. I feel like Arowan is the number one COVID hotspot in Los Angeles, because like, so many of those rich motherfuckers love taking like, you know, whatever, arugula shots or whatever the fuck they're serving out there for like $12, but they will not take the vaccine. You know what I mean? Arowan is like, not anymore, I quit seven months ago. Arowan is, uh, a place that makes Whole Foods look like Publix. Okay? You understand? You get that reference? I use Publix instead. Like, Whole Foods look like Ralph's. Arowan. Publix is nice. Publix is not cheap. Isn't Publix like the Ralphs of, uh, of like Miami and shit in that area? I'm reading the pedagogy of the oppressed, and a huge part of it is how the oppressed aim to have the role of the oppressors instead of getting rid of the system, kind of what she's doing right now. East Coast references? Publix is high class in Bama. Kroger, Kroger. It makes Whole Foods look like Kroger. The chicken is $30, motherfucker. That's what I'm trying to say. Everywhere there's different fucking chain grocery stores, you know what I'm talking about, motherfucker? You know. Okay? It makes Whole Foods look like an Acme if you're in New Jersey. It makes it look like a ShopRite. It's like Wegmans on steroids. Fuck! Everyone's like, please tailor your commentary to my hyper-specific, hyper-individual, uh, uh, personal experience. Goddamn. Let's keep going. I want to keep watching Anti-Masker psychos, dude.
We've lost all sensibility.
I mean, this is intimidating, y'all. I didn't sign up for this when I ran for the school board. I didn't sign up to be making medical health decisions here.
And again,
All around the country, folks, students and parents are weighing in on masks at the Salt Lake County schools.
Of the mask mandate. Fox 13's Haley Higgins continues our team coverage for you this evening. She was at the council meeting earlier today where parents voice their concerns. Haley.
Yeah, a lot of parents did. Now, right now, the, the county council has not scheduled a discussion or possible vote on what to do about the mask mandate. That has not been scheduled, but in anticipation of that, parents decided to say what they think should happen.
I understand there's parents on both sides. This is a lot that we're all having to navigate.
With classes starting soon, parents packed into the Salt Lake County Council work meeting Tuesday.
Mask never worked.
The good thing about science is that it's true whether you believe it or not.
Tuesday marks the second week in a row the Salt Lake County Council took public comment on a mask mandate in school. The state legislature gave councils the power to override a health department's mandate.
I feel that we should be wearing masks in order to help others and keep everyone safe.
But you who are sitting here without a mask on, if you vote for a mask mandate to muzzle my children and you can't even live up to what you're voting for, that is not okay.
The county health department says the COVID rate in children is 300% higher now than this time last year. 58 children required hospitalization and one died. Doctors predict those numbers will grow without prevention.
Part of that is because kids are not getting vaccinated because of their dumbass parents saying shit like, I mean, depending on the age group, obviously. I'm not talking about under 12. I don't know the exact details of under 12. But part of that is literally because like, we're going back to schools, okay? It's in-person learning, no mask mandates, nothing, no preventative measures whatsoever. Of course, it's gonna fucking spread like wildfire, and it's gonna hit kids that like can't deal with it and fucking die.
Now again, it's important to note that right now, the county council has not scheduled a discussion on the mask mandate, but they could at any time. Reporting live in Salt Lake City, Haley Higgins, Fox 13 News, Utah.
Haley, thank you so much. Utah saw another eight deaths from COVID-19 today. One woman and seven men. That now raises the total lives lost to 2,511. There have been another 634 new cases of the virus since yesterday. The percentage of people getting positive test results, though, has fallen now to just above 14%.
In the Gross Point School District, the decision has been made to start the year with masks optional, but that could change, uh, depending on where the COVID numbers go.
And not surprisingly, you have parents who want a mask mandate and others who support the current plans. Our Mara McDonald is live in Gross Point Farms. Mara, some of the mask mandate advocates, I understand, showed up to protest before tonight's school board meeting.
Karen, they did. They had a protest out here. You know, this meeting is going on as we speak. It has been emotional at times, tense at times. The reality is, you have two groups of parents in here with very divergent ideas on whether masks should be required. Let me show you.
Masked and with props like this Grim Reaper, several mask mandate advocates protested outside the school board meeting tonight.
I thought it was really important because I think it's important to protect our kids and to follow the expert guidelines put forward by the CDC and the American Pediatrics that say that we should have universal masking for all our students regardless of vaccination status or not, and-
They're lying to you. American Association of Pediatrics, more like American Association of Pedo-atrix. Pedophile, pediatric. You know what I'm saying? Seems too close to one another. I don't trust you.
And also because all of my kids are under 12.
But other parents who support the current mask plan attended tonight as well, so you had a mix of parents and wants.
Optional, yes. If you want to keep your kid in a mask, go ahead, and your kid's comfortable in it, fine. Mine are not going to.
Each group sat through the board's return to school plan, and when the superintendent announced mask optional, in a letter from the superintendent, which went out on Friday, Dr. John Dean laid out the decision to remain mask optional, at least for now, which includes an 80% vaccination rate in the community and current low COVID case numbers within the Gross Point Public School District. He also made it clear, the mask optional policy will be adjusted if needed. The state of Michigan is leaving these decisions up to individual school districts, but the governor supports masks for K through 12.
We as parents know what's best for our kids, and what you did was optional. If a parent wants to mask their child, have at it. If they don't, they shouldn't be required to.
You put convenience, emotions, and vague news above safety, science, and guidance from our nation's top experts who have dedicated their careers to public health and safety.
Back here live, the superintendent made it clear he has one goal this entire year, and that's keeping these kids in school face to face, and the district will do what it needs to do to make that a reality. We're in Gross Point Farms tonight. I'm Mara McDonald. Karen, Jace.
We did talk to- East Bay parents too, but hold on. New COVID denier. Oh, this is, uh, fucking Leslie Lawrenceon. We already covered this. He made a whole video on it. Devastated families play after death of lawyer who refused to get the COVID vaccine. Leslie Lawrenceon in the UK brav. His family said he had a misguided belief that because he was in his 50s with no known underlying health conditions, his body could fend off the virus naturally. If you remember, we watched the video of him personally going through the motions of getting COVID and talking about how easy it was. Well, it turns out, uh, Leslie Lawrenceon got his ideas by, uh, quack doctor Robert Malone, uh, who has nothing to do with the mRNA platform, who himself has admitted on numerous occasions that he has nothing to do with the mRNA platform, with the exception of, uh, you know, writing a paper in 1984 about it. Uh, and, uh, other dipshit, uh, ITW podcast host Brett Weinstein, and whoever the fuck this man is. Big tech censorship of ivermectin was what Leslie Lawrenceon showed, and talked routinely about ivermectin has been around for 40 years. There have been more than 4 billion doses administered in time, and its risk profile extremely well-known. Frontline doctors across the world have reported that it is not only safe but extremely effective in successfully treating COVID-19. I love this. It's like hydroxychloroquine over again. Yet, it is, its use is being suppressed and blocked by every single government that is within the purview of Big Pharma, and the mainstream media is exercising a media blackout, aka censorship regarding its existence, so the sheep never hear about it. Hey, what happened, Leslie?
Hey, Hussein. I heard you're-
What happened, Leslie? You fucking died, bitch. That's what happened. I'm ass. Yeah, I, uh, I don't think we should be taking this FDA non-approved vaccine, except I will take the vaccine that I have made in my bathtub. I will take horse dewormer instead, which the FDA expressly tells me not to take for COVID-19.
To one senior here at San Ramon Valley High School today, who's an 18-year-old who said he opposes the mask mandate in the district, but he didn't take off his mask until he came outside. And we noticed at this campus and at a nearby middle school, every student seemed to be masking up when they were going inside. At Iron Horse Middle School and at San Ramon Valley High, students showed up for the first day of school with masks on. That's become necessary school gear with a mask mandate for all 36 school district campuses.
I think it's great. I think, uh, my kids are very comfortable wearing the mask.
But just a week ago, school district meeting had to be halted after a crowd of demonstrators marched in demanding the mandate be lifted and even among the-
Bro, I bet none of those motherfuckers have children at that school. Like these parents, like I said, or even these people, not parents. Some of them are just like regular fucking people. They go to these things because they're fucking bored, dude. They're not going there because they like actually have like a legitimate reason to be there. They're just bored at home and they want to fucking yell at people because this is their fun.
Those protesters, there was disagreement with some saying no mask ever and others saying they wanted parents to be able to make the choice.
You should always ask like, where's your child? You have to bring your child going forward if you want to fucking yell about it.
10% of you, we look like lunatics.
It was a little disheartening. Um, I'm not surprised, unfortunately, but, uh, yeah.
Wait, what the fuck? They just let random people into the school? Yeah, for parents, uh, for school board meetings, yes. They do. Like, it's open to the public. In a lot of these, like, school board meetings, they're like open to the public.
It was, it was hard to see.
Today, while everyone we saw had their masks on, not everyone agrees on whether they should be required.
That's not just, you know, having the face covered. It's also the culture of fear.
Courtney Pronin decided to homeschool her two children after other kids chastised one of them for not wearing a mask on a playground.
I don't want them to be fearful of people and to think that they are causing harm to other people just by living-
So, so I'm gonna homeschool them and ensure that they're just fucking brain dead, dude. I'm going to irrepre- I'm gonna cause irreparable damage to their brain. Great.
And going to school.
She says she hasn't seen enough raw data to support masking mandates for young children, while the district officials say they're trusting the scientists who advise-
I love when people say, I don't want a culture of fear. That's why I made sure that like my children are literally outside of the school system so I can constantly pump in misinformation to their fucking brains. Okay? And, and basically, like mainline, every kind of irrational fear that I have as a fucking regular conservative. Conservatism is literally built around irrational fears of change and progress and anything that you haven't seen before in your fucking life. It's like, you're educating your kids on how to be a more functional Luddite. A more fearful Luddite. It's so dumb.
We're doing what's best as far as the county guidance goes. We are not healthcare providers and we can't make that determination ourselves.
And they say they'll try to work with families, but are clear the mandate will stay.
It's not going to be punitive to start, but we're going to be firm. It's a requirement. It needs to happen.
In Danville, Tom Jensen, NBC Bay area news.
Burlington School Board Meeting, okay, Delta over, uh, Delta variant, we're moving on. Delta variant overwhelms hospitals in Texas.
Now to the pandemic, a CDC forecast now saying COVID hospitalizations could quadruple by Labor Day to more than 33,000 admissions a day. Healthcare workers already overwhelmed with patients as the CDC nears a decision on possible booster shots. Marcus Moore is at a hospital in Houston with more on all of this. Good morning, Marcus.
Well, Amy, good morning to you. You can see the overflow tents just behind me, right outside this Houston hospital. And in one county in the southern part of the state, hospitalizations have increased more than 400% in the last 30 days. Hospitals here are strained.
This morning, the Delta variant surging across parts of the south.
You're just seeing this firestorm, uh, across the south that's basically picking off anyone who's unvaccinated. A significant percentage now are going into hospitals and going into ICUs.
Overflow tents erected in Houston and in North Texas, the region down to only two pediatric ICU beds.
These are not just for COVID. Car wrecks and anything else. If your child needs ICU and a ventilator in a 19-county area, we have two.
After banning mask mandates across the state, Texas Governor Greg Abbott now asking hospitals to stop non-emergency surgeries to make room for COVID patients.
Nobody else understands what it's like to work in an ICU right now. The countless death that we're seeing, we're not making a difference anymore. I feel like we've lost this fight.
And now concern is growing about what this means for unvaccinated children as they head back to school. In Dallas, the school district defying Governor Abbott's orders officially rolling out a mask mandate Tuesday.
There are consequences for whatever actions you take, and I'd rather take that consequence than have the health of students and staff and families, uh, on my mind.
A similar scene in Florida. The White House now looking into using federal COVID relief funds to help pay Florida teachers after Governor DeSantis threatened to withhold salaries of school officials who enact a mask mandate. This is Dr. Anthony Fauci joins the second largest teachers' union now calling for a vaccine mandate for educators.
I'm going to upset some people on this, but I think we should. We've had 615,000 plus deaths and we are in a major surge now as we're going into the fall into the school season. This is very serious business.
And so in the meantime, you have this perfect storm of a new surge of COVID-19, uh, marching across parts of the country. And then at some hospitals, uh, Amy, not enough staff to meet the potential demand for beds.
It is so disturbing. And Marcus, I know the CDC is meeting on Friday to discuss those booster shots.
Yeah, that's right, Amy. We, we understand that they, they, the advisory-
And the governors who ban mask mandates be criminally charged for resulting in deaths? Of course not. We live in America, dude. Are you fucking kidding me?
Panel does plan to meet on Friday to discuss the possibility of booster shots for people who are severely immunocompromised. But, uh, the CDC, a presentation that ABC News has, has viewed, um, also shows that at least a-
We're gonna ICU in Texas really bad right now. Our COVID unit is filling up or filled up. We're getting assigned three patients in our regular ICU and it's probably gonna soon be four. For ICU patient ratios, that's extremely dangerous. For COVID ICU, it's around six to eight.
Billion people, Amy, who got the, either the Moderna or the Pfizer vaccine have already gone to get a third booster shot. Now-
Boys and girls in MBs. We live in uncertain times. However. However. A lot of this is going to be cleared up soon. Once the FDA authorization kicks in and the subsequent vaccine mandates start flowing through every part of our daily existence. There will be a political battle. But that will literally come as COVID cases are spiking. So that political battle will basically be, hey, if you don't suck it the fuck up and if you don't actually enforce these vaccine mandates in your schools, if you don't actually enforce these vaccine mandates in everyday lives. Uh, now that the FDA has authorized it, which means that you can enforce vaccine mandates with ease, like you have, you legally can do that. You're gonna ha- we're gonna have to go back to fucking shutdowns and, and lockdowns and, uh, halt the economy one more time. And absolutely zero people want that. Capital owners do not want that. It's not gonna happen. So I believe that the chuds will be faced with a difficult decision. Give up on this idiotic, uh, uh, culture war issue. And try to, you know, overturn the original misinformation campaigns that they engaged in. Or suffer the financial consequences. That's it. It's not an accident that Texas is like literally calling on doctors to come into the state from the nearby neighboring states. They're literally letting chuds drive their trucks on the Talladega Super Speedway if they get vaccinated.
The FDA has not yet approved those shots, Amy.
All right, Marcus Moore with the latest there from Houston. Thank you.
Well, hey there. More QAnon, MyPillow and admitting crimes all at once. Oh, so I, uh, didn't really hyper-focus on Michael Pillow that much yesterday when he was wilding the fuck out. Wait, what is this? Virginia teacher resigns over critical race theory Republicans attempt to put Democrats on the spot. Biden eviction ban has New York landlords on the hook for $50,000 in misrant. Taliban is controlling Marquee. Can this nationalist fight the gold diggers? Ooh, that's, that one's fun. Medical bill's largest source of the US debt, but he says, wow, that's crazy. What a crazy study. He yelled at a chatter who asked if you covered MyPillow. Yeah, because yesterday I didn't want to fucking like constantly go through his like endless 72-hour stream. I wanted to go through some of the best parts later on. Michael Pillow is Mike Lindell. For those of you who don't know, he's the greatest thing to come out of the, uh, the Midwest. He is a recovering crack addict who decided that there's something way more powerful than crack to keep him going, and that is copium. And also his love for Christianity and Donald Trump and also fascism. Michael Pillow is holding a cyber symposium about election fraud. He's using basically all of the fucking assets, all of the wealth that he has, uh, accumulated through selling his ugly ass shit-ass fucking pillows. And I have tried those pillows. They're bullshit. Dumping all of that directly into like keeping the, uh, QAnon, the election was stolen from our, uh, Supreme Leader Donald Trump, uh, movement alive.
Everybody, we love that you're talking, but just take your volume down a little bit right now, please. Thank you.
Uh, we have a problem. Uh, my lawyer, my lawyer just called me Ty Clevenger, Mr. Ty Clevenger. And he said, uh, that I should put out this statement. And I just learned that Conan James Hayes may have taken without authorization the actual hard drives from the Mesa County or the Mesa Colorado County Clerk. And he needs to produce those hard drives immediately and return them to the clerk. And we should stop this data review until he produces the hard drives.
Repeat that. Ron, Ron, did you just say-
Everybody, this is important.
Yeah, this is really important, guys.
It's important, everybody, quiet.
Ron, did you just say that someone took all of the hard drives from Mesa County office just now?
Uh, so what I-
Sir, a crime has been committed. And I'm here to admit that.
Said was, I just learned that Conan James Hayes may have taken without authorization the actual hard drives from the Mesa Col-
I don't believe this.
Colorado County Clerk. And he needs to produce those hard drives immediately and return them to the clerk.
No.
And we should stop this data review-
Hold on, no. From Mesa, he knows.
No, that did not happen. Tina just said that did not happen.
Physical hard drives.
Hold on, no, Tina, Tina says no, that did not happen. Okay. Ron, you, you may have heard that incorrectly then. Thanks. Okay.
How, how about, can, can Tina explain this then? Cause I just got a call from my lawyer that he talked with Tina, Tina to tell me that.
Can we get Tina?
So, now I'm confused.
Hey Beth, can you have Tina call her lawyer? Okay. Isn't this cool? This is real life right here, man. You know, 20 years from now, you're gonna be telling your kids, I was there that day.
Can I, can I just-
I love when you guys say, uh, you guys spam chair when he's not even here. Like you can't even see it. He's not even in the frame. Ron Watkins adds an update.
Or is our county election workers, bottom line?
Great comment.
All right, uh, can, can I, can I put out an update really?
That's Code Monkey from the intro, Into the Storm documentary. Yeah, it's Ron Watkins's son, right? The dude that like runs the fucking QAnon, the dude who's like currently responsible allegedly for this iteration of QAnon that, that is still rotting people's brains, even though they put it on pause for a little bit. Love that they're still running in these fucking circles though.
Really quick to that last statement I had.
Are you showing something, Ron?
Yeah, no, can I, I just want to update that last statement that I had about, uh,
I can never understand what he says for some reason.
I, I just want to update that last statement. Uh, so the information that Ty Clevenger received was from Sharona Bishop and now she has informed Mr. Clevenger that Conan did have permission to take the hard drive, but did not have permission to upload it. Ms. Bishop indicated to Mr. Clevenger that she was an affiliate of Mrs. Peters.
You know what this is like for a lot of people with normal brains or as normal as your brain can be, even though you're on Twitch? This is like trying to get invested in One Piece on like the 11th season of the anime, okay? Like you've never watched anime and then some fucking psycho told you to watch One Piece and it's got like 11 million episodes and you just join in at like, you know, one of the later seasons and you're like, what the fuck is happening here? There's so many characters. There's so many different things that are happening. It's all made up, just like One Piece is, okay? Like, it's just all fabrications of psychotic delusional individuals, some of which are making money, a lot of which are just fucking crazy. So you're not gonna understand it. And that's part of the reason why I skipped this because it's like hard to, it's like hard to discern what's happening here because the people that remained. The people that remained in this movement are now, you know, they're keeping up with it. It's like, it's like trying to fucking dive into Grand Theft Auto roleplay after not playing for fucking three months. You know what I mean? You don't know what the fuck's happening. You don't know what the power dynamic is. You don't know who the characters are. So you just can't do it. It's just impossible. And that's precisely what's going on here. And that's part of the reason why I didn't want to fucking cover it. Like I care about, you know, I care about things that are tangible, things that are important, things that matter. This is, uh, you know, entertainment, certainly, but it doesn't hit those other metrics. What hits those metrics is the top of the hour ad break though, especially on consistency. And reliability. Because at the top of the hour, you know that there is going to be a 60-second ad break. Okay? And as far as, uh, reliability goes, you can avoid said ad breaks in the most reliable manner, which is with a $5 a month subscription or a Twitch Prime. Now Twitch Prime is free. You also can use the adblock or a VPN. Those are not as reliable. Twitch Prime is also free though. If you already have an Amazon Prime account. So, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, you can use those things to avoid this ad break, which is coming right now. Here is Michael Pillow getting confronted by Silver Fox, uh, Vanderbilt, uh, uh, royalty, Anderson Cooper on CNN. Here's the one-minute ad break for before that though.
MyPillow CEO Mike Lindell continues to claim he has evidence that China hacked US voting systems and switched votes for the former president to Biden votes. In a moment, you'll hear what two dozen election officials and cyber experts contacted by CNN say about those claims. Lindell is not backing down even as he faces a lawsuit from voting machine maker Dominion alleging he's defamed the company with his false accusations and Lindell's company is countersuing. CNN's Drew Griffin went to Minnesota to talk to Lindell about his claims that threaten democracy. Here's Drew's report.
The MyPillow guy.
Mike Lindell, yes, the MyPillow guy is convinced China hacked the election. Donald Trump really won and Lindell has the absolute proof.
They did it in all the states, every single state. Every single-
Capitalism is so crazy because like the only reason why this guy is like being paid attention to and not being seen as like the village idiot, you know what I mean? That you kind of like walk past. Is because he has money. That's it. Like capitalism is so wild that like the only thing that is different from this guy and the dude who's outside like yelling about how the world is ending or whatever the fuck, cause he's unfortunately having a, like a, you know, a schizophrenic, uh, attack or something and he doesn't- schizophrenic attack or something and he doesn't have medical treatment for it because our government fucking sucks. Is the amount of money that those people have. Like when he has that episode, people are watching. It's like people are watching, people are still paying attention to it, even if it's to make fun of them. The other guy can't even put fucking shelter over their head.
Single state.
And you have the proof?
Yes.
That will show?
I have the whole data.
The actual exchange of votes.
Yep. Yep. Hundred percent. One hundred percent.
It is, of course, complete nonsense. Despite every piece of so-called evidence Lindell has presented so far, three videos, a lawsuit, screenshots he sent to CNN. There's still no proof that the election was hacked, and that's according to two dozen cyber experts and election officials contacted by CNN.
A hundred percent evidence.
When Lindell released his so-called evidence.
It's wild because like it's the same fucking, it is the same energy as everything else. There are experts for these sorts of things that have like studied this shit. There's so much proof to prove the opposite, but people are like, I don't care. This guy is saying what I want to believe. So fuck those experts. I'm sure there's a multitude of reasons for why they're actually not credible and wrong. And the guy who's telling me what I want to hear is right. Anti-vaxxers go through the exact same thing. Flat earthers do the same thing too, even though flat earthers don't have that kind of impact on the planet. Climate change denialists do that too.
In videos like this, fact checkers quickly found out it was evidence of nothing. These images are just publicly available voter data scrolling across a screen. Not proof of election hacking. So Lindell changed his story, saying now the real evidence will be revealed at a cyber symposium streamed live with MyPillow discounts available throughout. And as further proof, he sent CNN a preview, six different screenshots.
You sent us this on Friday.
Yeah.
What is this?
That's just one piece of 1.2 billion lines of data from the election. Okay. There's within that will be timestamps of when it happened. There'll be flips in there.
So we sent this to our own experts. He said that it doesn't show any specific actions of any kind, election related or not. And it's proof of, of nothing.
Okay, so he said that's nothing, huh? Well, he's wrong. Then you didn't hire a cyber expert.
We didn't consult just one cyber expert. We consulted nine top election security experts who told us Lindell's screenshots were extremely rudimentary metadata and completely ridiculous. We also reached all 15 officials from the 15 counties where Lindell says, without any proof, votes were hacked and switched. Lindell mentions some of the counties in his videos and lists them out in his counter lawsuit against Dominion voting. They are counties that use paper ballots counted by systems not connected to the internet. Every one of them told CNN there is no evidence they were hacked by anyone.
You identified 15 counties where the votes were switched. We contacted all 15 counties, red and blue, red and blue. And we couldn't find a single person that said this is even possible. They say, you are mistaken. They think you're wrong. The bottom line is they have paper ballot backups that prove that they were not.
So you guys went and they let you audit there? They let you do a full audit, CNN? You guys did a full audit on 15 counties, huh?
We did what Lindell did not do. We went to Delta County, Michigan to see how the election was carried out. Trump won here nearly two to one.
The state Michigan entry point owner, Delta County.
In his videos and his lawsuit, Lindell claims someone in China hacked the election system here and stole away precisely 3,215 Trump votes and turned them into Biden votes. The Republican county clerk Nancy Perzrocky finds the allegation laughable for one main reason.
It is never connected.
Johnny Harris be like, well, these experts obviously have an incentive to say the election is not, are not hacked. Yeah, of course. Cybersecurity experts saying that the election integrity is actually intact. Hmm, seems kind of suspicious. Uh, I found out that the cybersecurity expert also provided cybersecurity for the elections. I don't know. We provided, we brought in the foremost authority on cybersecurity, who also, of course, consulted the government on cybersecurity. Turns out, you know, it's kind of sussy, dude. That's a sussy little baka he was.
Connected to the internet.
Never.
Never connected to the internet at all whatsoever.
Not only are they not connected to the internet, the votes are cast by hand on paper. Voters scan their ballots into this Dominion scanning machine where two digital storage cards keep a tally.
Ed Solomon was portrayed by OAN on his network as an alleged expert mathematician. In reality, however, he's a convicted felon who at the time he was interviewed by OAN was working as an installer at a swing set construction company in Long Island.
The paper ballot goes right into this bin under lock and seal.
And that container is sealed.
And just to check that everything went okay, they conduct audits comparing the paper ballots to the results on the computer. And in 2020, it was an exact match.
We.
Let me tell you something, folks. China sent in Chinese pens and pencils. Okay? Hear me out on this. Okay? Actually, I should be doing his, uh, I'll do his accent. China brought in Chinese pencils. Many of you don't want to talk about the Chinese pencils. I, we went down to the voting area and we found all the pencils in the trash. These idiots forgot to, they forgot to put the pencils. They forgot to dispose of the pencils. And we found that it's actually all made in China. So of course the Chinese pencil manufacturers are in on it. And they were actually working to make sure that Joe Biden was was elected instead of, instead of the President Joe Biden or President Donald Trump.
Audit at three different precincts and they matched exactly, so.
So what would you say to somebody who made a documentary? That among many counties accused your county of being the victim of a, of a Chinese hack that changed the vote counts?
I would say that didn't happen in Delta County.
A Republican-led Michigan State Senate investigation found out it didn't happen anywhere. No evidence of widespread or systematic fraud.
I don't think you really understand how votes are cast, collected and tabulated in this country.
Hey, you know what? I do. But what you don't
Tell me that that wasn't accurate Mike Pillow impersonation, by the way. You know what I do?
Understand is they can get after they're tabulated. They can get hacked after the fact, which they were because Donald Trump was gonna win anyway. Donald Trump was gonna win anyway.
The paper ballots which were cast.
You didn't do an audit to match them up, though.
Were audited against the machine count.
No, they weren't.
In these counties, they were.
No, they weren't. No, they weren't. Who told you that?
The county officials who did it.
Did they tell you that? Well, they're gonna have some answering to do.
No matter who says there was no widespread fraud in the election, whether it's local election officials, secretaries of state, judges, or even Donald Trump's own attorney general, Mike Lindell's conclusion is the same. They are all wrong.
All these county officials are lying.
I don't know. They might be misconstrued. We'll say misconstrued because they don't realize what happened.
Now, I'm gonna say they're misconstrued because my legal team is telling me that I'm no longer allowed to say they're lying on purpose because, uh, I have too many, far too many lawsuits by the nanny state coming up my ass. These guys, they're, they're very litigious. They won't let me lie about what they've done.
Lindell says his information comes from multiple sources, all of them super secret. He claims he's spent millions on the project and also claims he will give $5 million to anyone who proves him wrong.
Mike, you could, you can make up anything.
Who can? No, you can't. This is where, no, this is where.
Just going to have a demonstration.
No, 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 no. This is where you're wrong. We're giving it to all the, we're giving it to the cyber people that show up. We're gonna give them each state. Here's a state, Georgia. They can take it.
Okay, remember how we were talking about you can overdose on copium? I take it back. You literally can't. If this motherfucker hasn't died of copium, then it's physically impossible to die of copium, okay? A copium addiction is not going to kill you, no matter how hard you try because like this man has taken the most amount of copium in the United States of America. There is no one as, as copium addicted as Michael Pillow, brother.
You could possibly be the victim of a scam here.
Well then, why don't you?
Then again, it could be the fucking tolerance he built from his many years of doing crack.
Take it apart.
You could possibly be the victim of a scam here.
Well then, why don't you come to the symposium and make $5 million? Are you worried about me? We should give a hug. You're worried about old Mike? Oh, God bless you.
Here's what we're worried about. We're worried that what you
Dude, this is the funniest interviewer, dude. Like, I love when mainstream media like remembers that they're fucking journalists and shit when they're like covering dudes like Michael Lindell. Because like, you know, Michael Lindell is not a part of the fucking in crowd, right? So he can get away with just like being an actual fucking journalist.
are doing is mistakenly or deliberately destroying the confidence in the legitimate elect.
You're only funny when you make fun of people. Aw, thank you.
President of the United States and fostering what could be real damage to this country.
I never said anything bad about Biden or the Democrats ever. Never.
You have, you have, you have through this, through this investigation.
No, I am not. You pull it up. You're lying now. You're lying. I said the Democrats warned us. No, you're lying. I said the Democrat Party warned us of this.
You're saying that, you're saying that Joseph Biden was illegitimately elected.
I'm saying that China did an attack on our country.
And that the wrong person won.
That's right.
The people who have watched your video believe what you say.
Hundred percent.
If you're wrong, isn't that very dangerous?
But I, yes, but I'm not wrong. I've checked it out. I've spent millions. You need to trust me and come there.
This is awesome.
Yeah, I trust him. Drew Griffin joins us now. Do you have any reason to believe that now after months of this, I mean?
Why does CNN give him runtime? I don't know. 1.5 million views since August 6th is a good reason. He's entertaining as shit. CNN doesn't give a fuck.
He has never offered proof of anything and there is no proof and it's been debunked.
I love that he literally did the source trust me, bro meme, by the way. I'm, I'm telling you the truth. My source just trust me.
It's like his support for sham remedies. I mean, he has a history.
And it just, the conversation, as you could tell, Anderson, goes round and round and circles. And I'm telling you, after our discussion, I'm not convinced Mike Lindell understands how voting works, period. Let alone that he has proof of a massive voting conspiracy. And like you say, he, he claims to have all these super secret sources, but he never shows those sources, never shows their proof. There's very good reason to believe all of this is linked to recycled conspiracy theories from the past, all completely discredited. Lindell says, no, this is new. He's paid millions to check it out, but.
I know you're not gay, but would you marry Anderson Cooper if he proposed? Yes.
You know, as we've seen so far, it just does not hold up, period.
Yeah, Drew Griffin, I appreciate it. Thank you.
That Vanderbilt money, dude, it'll fucking hit different. You know what I'm saying? I want to get back to the side talk shit, but this is the last thing I want to look at before we move on to that. Medical bills are the largest source of US debt, study says. I wonder if there's anything we can do about this.
Welcome back to CBS This Morning. A recent study shows debt from medical care has skyrocketed in the United States. More than half of all the bills in
I wonder why Gail isn't there at CBS in the morning this morning. Oh, wait, I do know. Because she was getting buck wild at the fucking Obabe 60th birthday. That's why, motherfucker, what's up? Yeah, that's right. Gail was too busy eating adrenochrome cocktails. Sipping on that adrenochrome cocktails with the fucking world leaders and other famous people who were engaging in the satanic ritual of Obama's 60th birthday. More like the 666 birthday of Obama.
Collection right now are medical bills. That means debt collectors have gotten involved. Our consumer investigative correspondent, Anna Werner, has been looking into this and joins us now. Anna, what have you learned so far?
Well, Dana, a lot, actually. Think because you have a job, you won't wind up in bankruptcy or facing a lifetime of medical debt payments? You might, as the stories of two Americans illustrate so well. Florida resident Chad Kish's medical debt story began with severe pain from herniated discs in his neck last year.
I really couldn't get out of bed for more than a few minutes.
Doctors told the 39-year-old who runs his own small pest control business that he would need surgery, so he checked to make sure his insurance would cover it, then went ahead.
The pain was excruciating. That was probably the most pain I've ever been through.
But afterwards, he got stuck with a bill for a facility charge. He says the insurance company refused to pay $145,000. He says the hospital then demanded payments of $1,500 a month.
And I told them that can't happen. Can we go with something lower? And they said no, so I just stopped answering their calls.
When he couldn't pay, the hospital sued him.
Is this one of those things that it hits you in the gut and you're like, oh, boy, you know, now what do I do?
I don't understand. Uh, sorry. You should have just not gotten sick and needed surgery, uh, obviously. It's called freedom. Have you looked it up in a book or something like?
Um, you know, and why is it happening to me?
He's not alone. A new JAMA study finds medical bills are the largest source of American debt, with a record $140 billion in collections owed last year, nearly twice.
Fuck yeah, baby. Dude, we are so sick. We're the, I mean, literally, but also figuratively, dude, sickest nation on earth, baby. Let's go. Wealthiest country on the planet. Let's fucking go, dude. Let's go! Medical debt. Call freedom, bitch. Look it up!
Twice the previous estimate.
It's all about the medical bills.
Yeah, it's sort of a uniquely American phenomenon.
Stanford professor Neil Mahoney, the lead author, says bills are often higher for people living in a dozen states that chose not to expand eligibility for Medicaid under the Affordable Care Act.
The fact that the healthcare system, which is supposed to heal people, is creating half of debt and collections in the United States is, you know, something that I, I think is quite distressing.
One of those states is Wisconsin, where 38-year-old Alyssa Gummo lives.
I felt like a criminal, like I was doing something wrong.
Yeah, it's called getting sick in America. Yeah, it is a crime, okay?
October, a man showed up at her
In America, you just have to suck up and take on a lifetime of debt if you want to, one, educate yourself and participate in like, uh, and participate in making the American labor force more competitive with respect to the rest of the international labor force. Uh, and also if you ever get sick, it's just, it's a rap, dude. Like, great.
her front door in Kenosha with a court summons. She was being sued for unpaid medical bills.
Did you ever think that you would be in the financial situation you're in because of medical bills?
Never. It just makes me feel like a failure.
This is when they were suing you.
Yes.
And it's the second time. Back in 2017, a $50,000 bill for hip surgery forced her into bankruptcy despite having a full-time job.
You know, middle-class Americans, we get the short end of the stick. It's, it's not fair.
Thanks, Obama.
This time, the single mom has a job that pays more, but not enough to pay new bills not covered by her
Thanks, Joe Biden. We know the Republicans are demons. We know that they're vultures. We know that they're parasitic scumbags. You guys are supposed to be the counterbalance to that. The Democratic Party is supposed to stop this from happening. And the ACA falls completely short of doing that. I know that they slipped in like, oh, this happens in states where Medicaid expansion hasn't happened. It's like, well, okay, that person was not even eligible for Medicaid, so shut the fuck up. I think people should start saying this happens in states where Medicare eligibility doesn't happen because it's the fucking truth. As in Medicare eligibility should be all of the fucking people. Guess what? 100% of the people under the age of 65 are not eligible for Medicare. And it happens all the goddamn time. Where's the public option, though? Because hold on. I thought Joe Biden was like a big advocate for it, Jack. What happened to the public option? Does anyone remember? You're joking, but Reddit debaters would seriously argue that this person is fat and not exercising every day, and this is the only reason for getting sick? Yeah, well, that's why I fucking don't deal with Reddit debate lords and make fun of them, yell at them, call them fucking stupid, tell them to suck my cock and then move on. Best way to deal with dumbasses.
High deductible insurance plan.
This is Lisa from AmeriCollect. I'm a debt collector.
Debt collectors call day and night. She's now on a payment plan, but says the extra $193 a month She's now on a payment plan, but says the extra $193 a month bill often leaves her choosing between prescriptions and groceries.
I sit at my computer and I try and, you know, balance my-
Freedom, baby.
Bills and I just, just want to give-
Wait, what do you mean? There you go. She said it. Uh, ma'am, you said it already. It's called options. Uh, guess what? You have the option to get groceries or pay your medical debt while you're already bankrupt. So seems like she does have options.
Up.
Back in Florida, Kish says he was able to negotiate his bill down with a self-pay discount, but is still on the hook for roughly $50,000. And now he'll be paying $125 a month until it's gone, which will take some 33 years.
Very, very frustrating and, uh, you know, I, I don't think I should be paying the amount that I have to pay.
Well, keep in mind, that study only looked at debt that was already in collections, so it's not the entire picture here. Data from the pandemic isn't reflected yet, and Mahoney says he expects that to be even worse. Now, if you have a story about you and your medical bills to tell us, email us at healthcosts@CBSnews.com.
Good stuff. Good stuff. Greatest, uh, greatest country on earth, of course. Greatest country on earth. I kind of want to see this Spider-Man guy. I don't know if it's like fun or not, but I also kind of want to look at the side talk. Let's see what their most popular ones are. Lil' Ags? Let's get to some fun shit, dude.
Yo, Bo, we outside, I'm Lil' Ags. Come on, man. If you don't know about me, I'm a rapper. Your rapper favorite, Trapper. Trapper favorite rapper.
What are you looking for in the perfect female?
She's gotta be perfect. Come on, perfect personality, pretty, but-
Yeah, you gotta have a juice box. Know what I'm saying? You gotta have Capri Sun. Know what I'm saying? None of that fucking bullshit. Like, I don't want welches. I want Capri Sun.
Fat ass too, respectfully. Who's your celebrity crush?
Jennifer Aniston, baby.
Come on, she fire, I gonna lie.
Top tall, you top 10, man.
Top 10, we go, we were- Top 10, that I lost with a gun, you ready to va? Come on, we outside. Oh, say less.
Tell me what you're sipping on right now.
Sipping on that hot cocoa right now, I ain't gonna lie. Slow break. Call each other. Call out me, you fire, I gonna lie. Call each other. Pull up. You know I be at New York City. Come on, fire. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hello? Where we at? Oh, you want to know where I'm at? We outside.
Respectfully. That's awesome. Spider cuz.
Side Talk NY fucking C is Spider cuz. We about to go to the fucking liquor store. Matter of fact, RIP to Pop Smoke. RIP to Pop Smoke.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Listen, let me tell you something.
Did he just waterboard himself? Spider cuz.
Batman. If I see Batman, I'm gonna smack the shit out that nigga. I ain't gonna hold you. We gonna, we gonna, we gonna get it on. Y'all ain't know Spider cuz could dance, right? You know that? How you doing, baby? You want to dance with me? Spider cuz, what do you think about Peter Parker? Man, fuck Peter Parker. Yo, Peter Parker, you a bitch. You a bitch, homie. And I'm gonna say it to your face. I'm the real Spider cuz. I'm the real homie. You in the Lower East Side, homie. All y'all bitch-ass Spidermans that's trying to beat me, y'all can't beat me. Look at me. Dead asses on. Hello, everyone. I need your hand. Oh my-
When I said, when I, when I said he has the dead asses on, some of you guys said, no, that's rock aware. No, those are the dead ass tims, dude.
My god, you see that? Hello. Oh my god. He's Crip now. He's affiliated. Look, he's affiliated, man. Where you from? India. India, he's an Indian Crip right now. Batman can't do this shit, you heard? Ask that nigga to do one pull-up. If you fucking with me, you're fucking with Spider cuz too. And you don't want them kind of problems. You don't want these kind of problems. Cause you know what? The last thing got fucked up, he didn't make it back home, homie.
Spider cuz. Extended cuds? Oh, wow. They, they went to Yams Day? That's sick.
Hey, yo, you going to Yams Day this year?
Where?
Yams Day?
Hmm, I don't know. What is that?
How you know where Yams Day is? Do you like-
Oh my god, that's so sick. They, they did a video with ASAP Rocky. I would die. I love ASAP Rocky. I think he's so cool.
Yams? Do you like to eat candy yams?
Yeah.
Oh, even she like yams. See what I'm saying? She's so cute, man.
They killed Biggie. Fuck ISIS. We out here all day, every day. They killed Biggie.
Talk your shit.
Yams Day all day. Yes, 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 all day, all day, all day.
You ever heard of Yams Day?
Nah.
You a fucking square. Hey, can I interview your dog?
Hey, how's it going?
Shout out Side Talk, all shit, man. Can I ask you a personal question? Do you smoke weed? January 18th, I want you to log to ASAPyams.com and watch something called Yams Day and get high to it. Can you do that for me?
Chat, everybody knows Biggie was killed by ISIS.
Aw, man, love, brother. Take care. That's my boy. That's my boy.
Motherfucking Yams Day this year is fucking virtual, nigga. January 18th, bro.
Motherfucker, you better come to motherfucking Yams Day. We gonna kick your motherfucking ass, yo bitch. Real New Yorker shit, man. Rolling up in the store, man. You know what I mean? When you see a bitch, tell the bitch you better-
Who are these people? How do you not know who fucking ASAP Rocky is, dude? And ASAP Ferg? ASAP Yams, rest in power, rest in peace. This is ASAP Mob. They're fucking, they're dope.
Believe, man.
Yeah, right now.
Stop smoking fake bamboos. Bamboo papers, please, bro. Y'all gotta, y'all gotta do something with the market, man. We struggling over here, bro. NYC2 flooded with the fake ones, bro.
You know what I mean? Dropping shit, nigga, maybe look like-
Hey, it's not his store. He mad I'm dropping stuff. It's not his store. Why do he cancel that? I don't know. Quick question, you come to Yams Day?
Virtual, right?
Damn, this is not even one minute long. It's three minutes long. Hold on. You want to know who? You want to know who ASAP Mob is, dude?
One nigga got that nigga up out of there. Thank God. Yeah, I had to fight some nigga in the bathroom. No homo, we slipping on semen. We, niggas was jerking off in the bathroom, nigga. Me, we flopped, got that nigga up out of there, all that shit. You know, this is parts of the story that I don't like to-
I don't like to tell. That's, that's ASAP-
One nigga got that nigga up-
This is the greatest, this is literally the fucking absolute greatest video that has ever hit the airwaves, dude.
Up out of there, thank God. Yeah, I had to fight-
We slipping on semen?
Some nigga in the bathroom, no homo, we slipping on semen. We, niggas was jerking off in the bathroom, nigga. Me, we flopped, got that nigga up out of there, all that shit. You know, this is parts of the story that I don't like to-
No homo, we slipping on semen? Oh, that's so fucking dumb, dude. Isn't ASAP Rocky bi too? I don't know if that's like public or, or not. I actually don't know.
He know what's going on. You see what's going on, man?
It might be like, he might be. I wouldn't be surprised. Leaked? What the fuck? I don't know him like that, dude. What the fuck do you mean? I don't know him at all. He's hot, though, either way.
Yeah, yes, sir. Happy fucking Yams Day. We gonna see you there, bro, Jay. You know that.
Yo, shout out to my boy Jared. He coming with me.
Shout to Jared, man. Yeah, I already know. We stopping traffic. We shot the traffic, man. Stopping traffic. Yams Day, man. Stopping traffic, man. I ain't gonna lie, he got, he got bad breaks. Looking for the yams. We want the yams, man. Looking for the yams, man. Where the yams at, man? Let's see, man. Brilliant sweet potatoes, man. Very organic vegetarian, you know what I mean? You, you can eat it with lamb chops if you want, salmon, your favorite tofu dish. You know what I mean? Yams Day.
Yo, but it's Yams Day, bro. It's Yams Day. It's Yams Day. But it's Yams Day.
We out of this bitch. I love you so much. Thank you. Thank you. We just sitting here, this shit look like the Michael-
About to get arrested.
Jackson Bad video right now. Ain't nobody in this shit. You shit me? Yeah, my boy right there, one time. Look at my son. Bless up, Jeez. Yeah. Where you from?
From Brooklyn.
What part of BK you from, homegirl?
From East New York.
That the fuck I'm talking about? That's right. Represent your shit, girl. What you up to, my nigga?
I'm going to the crack spot.
Oh, I already dig. I dig. I shouldn't dig. RIP, man. You know that all day, you heard? Shout out, Toby.
I don't think he is. He had an uncomfortable moment during an award show with an, with an LGBTQ host that came off as homophobic. Though he apologizes with several years ago. Yeah, I don't think- Rocky is def not bi, dude is still working through his discomfort with homosexuality in general law. He says pause constantly. I don't think ASAP Rocky is, is, uh, I mean, maybe he is. I'm surprised to hear this. It'd be hard to, it'd be hard to be fucking consistently homophobic when you're, when you're BFFs with a dude who used to be very openly homophobic and is now openly bisexual. Talking about Tyler, the creator.
You know, Polo Ground Entertainment, nigga, and all that last-
Let them know, bro.
Yeah, nigga, let's get it, Jeez. Ah, nigga, yeah.
See this? Wait, where is it? He's-
We on tour, you just like, yeah, man. Man, I think I want to get the McLaren, man. I, I think I might go get that, man. That is so fucking dope. Like, so do you drive? Do you drive? I'm like, what? Nah, I don't drive. Aw, man, you gotta get the fucking McLaren, man. That part, I can't get mad because that part is so accurate.
He doesn't even support BLM? What? What are you guys telling me right now? You're hurting my feelings. I don't want to hear any of this. What? ASAP Rocky doesn't support BLM? What the fuck? Oh, no, he said he criticized the Black Lives Matter bandwagon. What?
As old man, I feel so ancient.
Dude, stop, stop saying things. Stop it, stop it, stop it. ASAP Rocky learned quickly that the internet will turn on you. Testing rapper was arrested in Stockholm after he and two of his members of the entourage got in a street ball. Weeks while Rocket was in cars where his celebrity friends started a petition to rally for his release. ASAP Rocky gets name dropped during Trump impeachment hearings. Wait, what? Where is the fucking clarification? I'm ASAP Rocky, did not sign up to be no political activist. On a 2015 interview with Time Out Rocky, pretty be unconcerned about police violence against African-Americans in the wake of the Ferguson riots. When talking about being compelled to rap about Ferguson, he said, I'm ASAP Rocky, did not sign up to be no political activist. I want to talk about my motherfucking lean, my best friend's dying, girls, my jiggy fashion and my inspiration in drugs. I live in fucking Soho in Beverly Hills. I can't relate. I go back to Harlem, it's not the same. It's a sad story. I gotta tell you the truth. I'm in the studio, I'm in fashion houses, I'm in these bitches drawers. I'm not doing anything outside of that. That's my life. These people need to leave me the fuck alone? In a new interview with Curven Frost, Rocky clarified his past comments. Rocky said that people called him and told him that black Twitter says he doesn't care about the hood. He said, I thought I addressed that in the past. And to be in jail here and people still trying to stir up some weird shit. He then explained what he meant by his past comments. What I will say, though, is in those old interviews, they used to say, I think it's inappropriate for me to rap about things I didn't help with. I felt like when it came to Ferguson, J. Cole went down there and he was actually on the news and he helped. I felt like he deserved to rap about it. And when someone asked me what, in that, when I asked me that in 2015, I'm like, I just feel personally, if I'm in Soho or I'm here, I can't even talk on that. That's appropriating. That's not sincere. It's pretentious. Still kind of dumb, like, well, you can go there. Did you watch a report on the only country to find Ron DeSantis mask policy? No. It's the same woman that says fuck ISIS, they killed Biggie. She's a nurse, right? Yeah, I, I remember. I remember this interview, dude. Yes.
ISIS, if you come to New York City and you try to blow any-
I remember this interview.
Thing up, I'm coming for you. Ya ISIS niggas, fuck ya ISIS niggas. We from New York. I'm from Brooklyn. Fuck ISIS. They killed my boy Biggie.
I'm making raps sound so boomer, bro? What do you mean? Notice how ISIS got real quiet after that interview, though? You're right. Oh, my god. You're fucking right, dude. Has anybody heard from ISIS since then? No? Guess what, dude? She took down ISIS. All right, the boot camp were students trained to be pro-life foot soldiers. Let's watch. Turned ISIS into was-was? ISIS fell off, the hood watches the Taliban now? Yo, they need to do an update with her. They need to update with her being like, yo, fuck Taliban.
These college students are taking a week out of their summer vacation for one very important reason. To train as foot soldiers in the nation's war over abortion. With the conservative majority on the Supreme Court and abortion ban sweeping across the states, With the conservative majority on the Supreme Court and abortion ban sweeping across the states, the anti-abortion movement needs a good ground game. Welcome to pro-life boot camp.
This is gonna be so fucking annoying. I can't wait. It's gonna piss me the fuck off, dude.
So this week, we are doing the training session for the newbies at the Dr. Joseph Graham Fellowship for College Pro-Life Leaders with the Texas Right to Life.
Welcome. We're doing a week-long training to become better pro-life activists and learn how to better talk about and communicate these pro-life issues to the community.
Alright, you're good to go.
Hi, Jordan.
Jordan.
I guess a big part of it is getting to know other pro-life leaders in Texas and getting to witness what they struggle with and learn from what they deal with on their campuses and bring it back to my own.
I'm Veronica Arnold Smith. Thank you all so much for coming. Texas Right to Life was founded in 1972, which was the year before Roe v. Wade passed. So Dr. Joseph Graham.
I mean, ironically, this camp also doubles as, ironically, this camp also doubles as birth control because ain't nobody having sex with these people, okay? Like, the easiest way to never have a child is by artificially creating a situation where, like, you are openly unfuckable.
Graham founded Texas Right to Life. He was a professor at the University of St. Thomas. And a student, just like y'all, went up to him and said, hey, I think we should do something about this pro-life issue. It's really important. This is a scholarship program for undergraduate students. And they have to apply. And if they're selected, they come to their first week of training, which is what y'all are witnessing right now.
How many students apply every year?
Well, it's increasing every year. This year we had about 65 apply. And we were able to select 49.
And you say they get scholarships?
They do. They earn $1,000 per semester.
I'm a practicing obstetrician-gynecologist and I've performed over 1,200 abortions.
I'm doing the math in my head. Forty-nine students. A thousand dollars a semester. Two thousand dollars a year, right?
Yep, plus training and expenses.
A hundred thousand dollars for one class, right? And just in scholarships. And then we're, you know, we're in a four-star hotel right now.
This is, this is unusual for us. This is really nice to be here.
Who is paying for all of this?
We have a lot of really generous donors. We also have.
Psychos, dude. Fucking psychos. That's who. Psychopaths. I mean, look at Michael Pillow. He's like, single-handedly fucking funding his own insane symposium, right? They have too much money, like, they just, they have too much money and they are fucking insane.
Ton of donors who just give a little bit, what they can, you know?
Texas Right to Life does more than just train college students. Its political action committee raised three.
That's so funny. Yeah, dude. That's how abortion works. I mean, it literally is. But it's pretty funny because like, at, in the first trimester, when you take a pill, which is where like 90% of abortions occur in the first trimester, it's basically a pill that you take that, you know, you just pee out, okay? It's heavy flow. That's it. That's literally it. I like that they tried to, you know, make a little baby in that fetus, which is pretty funny. But it's not even like a fully developed thing at that point.
Right to Life does more than just train college students. Its political action committee raised $3.1 million in the 2018 elections. More than half of that money came from the Wilkes Brothers. Texas.
So basically, it's a forced miscarriage? Hello, welcome to abortions.
Oil and gas billionaires who have been called the Koch brothers of the Christian right. The program, like this fellowship, where does it fit in the overall strategy of Texas Right to Life?
We're helping train the generation that already believes in this cause, but may feel like they not have the tools to, to help.
Pee more like a period? Yes, it's like a period. It's a heavy flow period. Which is also what a miscarriage is like, uh, in a lot of instances, too.
And so we're giving them the tools.
If you didn't know, some women don't even know that they're fucking pregnant and then they have a miscarriage and they think like, oh shit, I had a heavy-flow-ass period. What the fuck's going on?
This is a sulfur clamp. The abortionist uses this clamp to grasp an arm or leg. Once he has a firm grip, the abortionist pulls it hard in order to tear.
What the fuck? That's not real, dude. Yo, yo, he just pulled the baby's leg out, dude? That's awesome. Haha, this is so dumb. Bro, what the fuck, dude? Oh, no. Hahaha, this is so stupid, dude. Oh, Jesus Christ, they're like traumatizing fucking little dumbasses. Yeah, it's like a little chicken leg.
Hard in order to tear the limb from the baby's body.
This video isn't completely accurate. It exaggerates a bit, like the risk of abortion or how certain procedures look. But it's effective because it's graphic.
Can you even show this? It's not real, dude. It's a fucking cartoonish depiction that is misinformation.
Like the risk of abortion or how certain procedures look. But it's effective because it's graphic and disturbing. It sounds like you put.
What the fuck? What is happening, dude? Oh, this is hilarious, dude. Yeah, dude. For the record, what they're showing here, this is something that can happen. Yeah. If you have a serious medical complication that is going to literally fucking murder you if you have the child and there's no other alternative solution. In late-term pregnancy, yes, that's what's happening. In a lot of instances, the child is, the baby is literally fucking dead. Okay? And insane, insanely, insanely rare. I bet that shit fall off the bone. Oh, stop, dude. Of course, they're making it seem like every abortion is like this. When it's not. Abortion is like the, the first thing that they showed.
A lot of emphasis on this fellowship, like it's very important. Why is it necessary? Why is this fellowship even needed?
Hmm, well, we are trying to save the world, so bingo.
I want you to know today, no matter where you're at or what you've done, you can change. Make a decision today to protect the preborn.
The preborn.
Science tells us that, uh, life actually begins at conception, when the egg and sperm meet. Uh, and so that unborn child, um, is actually a life.
So right now, the students are practicing.
I always want to ask these people, like, the, the, the classic, like, hospital question. It's like, there's a, there's a fucking play, the hospital's on fire, okay? You got 10 babies on one side. Alright? And then you got a thousand invi- uh, thousand fucking tubes of, of fertilized eggs on the other. Who do you save? You save the fucking babies? The 10 babies versus a thousand, dude? One thousand, dude? You're really not gonna save 1,000 lives because of the 10 lives? You can save only one. You just... Not even a thousand, fuck it. One baby. There's a baby in a crib. And that baby in the crib is fucking crying. And then on the other hand, you have literally a thousand fucking vials of fertilized eggs. That's a thousand lives, dude. You're not gonna save a thousand lives? No, you're not, because that's not fucking real. It's like, not a real thing. Nice hypothetical situation. I've now seen the light. The problem is virtually every single person admits that there's a difference between a thousand uh, uh, fertilized eggs and like one fucking full baby. And if they say, I would save the thousand fucking fertilized eggs in an ma- in an effort to be like consistent, then they look like absolute idiots. So it doesn't matter. It's a win-win.
Tableting, the process in which you set up a table on campus to talk about abortion. There are five essential rules to tabling. Number one, have to have a topic. Serves as a departure point for the conversation. Number two, stand in front of the table and don't sit. Always have a female present because optics are important. Keep the conversation going by asking questions. And last but not least, have a sign-up sheet.
If I had a friend like you do, you know, I'd want, if I wasn't, I don't know, I don't know how to word it. You know what I'm trying to say?
Yes, ma'am. Cut in early quickly. So you're doing a great job. Um, don't forget to ask questions. So she said, I personally don't believe life begins at conception.
Yes.
You had a really good opportunity for a question there.
When do you think it begins?
Yeah, what's your opinion? When do you think it begins? It's like, we want to know.
I just want to give it to her, though. It's a baby.
I know, I know, I know.
Oh, my God, they're literally training them to be like debate lords about abortion. It's literally just like, I don't care, dude. You can't stop me, okay? I'm gonna get fucked. I'm gonna let the dude cream pie the fuck out of me. And then I'm gonna get a fucking pill and I'm gonna piss that fucking fetus out. How about that? Suck my dick. That's the way you should deal with like these fucking freaks, dude.
Follow-up question, because sometimes people just honestly have not thought out their opinion.
Has there ever been a time where?
Literally teaching them the dialogue tree.
You've been tabling and someone made such a strong point for pro-choice that you're like, mm. I may think about converting.
Oh, yeah, there have definitely been times when like pro-choice people will make an argument that I've never heard before.
Oh, my God, this dude's man, this, this dude's name is Gunner Austin. I wonder if he's related to Joel Osteen?
Or that's like, really, really logically sound. And I'm just kind of like, man, you put me in a pickle here. It happens, you know? Um, but the best way to respond to that is always to just go, you know what? You know, maybe you've made some good points here and, you know, I definitely see where you're coming from, but I still can't agree with your basic propositions.
It's that but, right?
Yeah. It's always a but.
The abortion Holocaust, dude. Okay, apparently they show like dead Holocaust victims here or something. Let me just like scroll through real quick to see exactly where. Because that's the other thing, like, they will routinely fucking do some of the nastiest shit, like, they'll show you like actually fucking dead kids and stuff like that. Yeah. Oh, God, that's really fucked up. Okay, 8:07. What the fuck is wrong with these people, man? Hold on. Fucking Christ, dude. Oh, fucking psychos. Okay, okay, here.
I usually wake up like four nights before my alarm. It's really bad.
Every day?
Well, like, I just like turn off my alarm.
Good morning, good morning. How y'all doing? Y'all, y'all dressed nicely? Thank you very much. I, I clean up alright. Good morning. You guys excited about today? Yeah?
Well, howdy. Howdy. So normally during our newbie training, we take people for a tour of the local Holocaust museum. Uh, the Holocaust museum is undergoing renovations right now, but the reason we do this.
So we brought the Holocaust to your doorstep.
Because I, I think it's important for people to see, uh, past genocide. Uh, and not that we can say that the Holocaust, the Nazi Holocaust was the same as the abortion Holocaust at all.
But we're going to generally imply it very strongly and then urge you to use that as an argument.
But I do think it's important that we draw from history. So, uh, instead of going to the Holocaust museum today, we're going to watch a couple of films about it. And then we'll have some discussions.
Is he the only black person there? Yeah, of course.
In July 1941, Hermann Göring, Hitler's second-in-command, authorized all necessary preparations for the final solution of the Jewish question. In several killing facilities.
If only Marjorie Taylor Greene had gone to one of these things, she would know better about like, you know, how the Holocaust is bad.
Exclusively designed to kill human beings on an industrial scale. Camp authorities used poison gas to murder children, women, and men.
That's heavy. For what purpose do you have them watch Holocaust films?
When we imagine the, such a tragic time.
Hold on.
Time as, as Nazi Germany and what they were going through. Um, we often ask ourselves, where was the world? And, uh, it took a while for the world to catch up and to do something about it. A lot of students will understand the same line of thinking on where was the world? And now it's, it's my turn to take action.
To future generations, it must be told. In the 20th century, there existed a civilization.
They're just straight up showing photos of like, just piles and piles of dead people in the backs of trucks. Like photos taken at concentration camps.
Which for 12 years returned to barbarism.
It could be a slippery slope to compare the two, though, don't you think? Like, even though you say.
Okay, uh, delayed autistic LP is bringing up some CDC facts, stats. It's, uh, basically what I just mentioned, but a little bit more, um, coherent. 92.2% of abortions happen in the first trimester and 38.6% of all abortions are medical. You take a pill, less than 1% of abortions happens past 21 weeks, which is the middle of the second trimester. Okay? And they happen mostly because the woman's health is at risk. And we repeat this all the fucking time. I say this regularly. And yet it still somehow escapes.
They're not the same. In a space like this, people are connecting them, right? Some people would look at that and be like, that is egregious that you would compare the Holocaust to abortion. Because there's so many differences.
I would think if we were claiming that they were exactly the same, then that would be wrong. But we're claiming that there is a slippery slope in people's mentality. And what's going on today is quite different. They were discriminating against Jews and so many countless other types of people that they saw as unfit. And, uh, today in the United States and across the world, we're discriminating against an entire group of people, the unborn.
Like, that's such a duh, the reason why they have to like remarket that as the entire group of people, the unborn, is because they can't say, we're discriminating against fertilized eggs. Yeah. They're not fucking people, dude. They're fertilized eggs, dumbass. God damn it. Unborn people. She's slipping on semen, dude. Slippery slope of semen.
So we watched a couple clips. The first one was, um, a clip about the Holocaust. And then just going further and thinking how if you're against the killing of life or even potential life in a situation like Nazi Germany, can you still support the ending of life or potential life in a mother's womb?
Ooh, Steve. I don't know, that sounds like a little stretch, don't you think?
I mean, if you start off with just, hey, do you think the Holocaust and abortion are the same? Most people are gonna be immediately thrown off and think, why are you trying to compare those two?
Do you think they're the same?
They are not the same. They're two.
Why not? Why? Because it makes you look like a fucking freak when you say it? If you think, why aren't they the same? But why? I mean, seriously? If you unironically believe that like, you know, this is murder, it's baby murder, then yeah, it is the same. Actually, abortions would be even worse. I want her to say abortions are worse than the Holocaust, because that's what they believe.
Two very, very different scenarios, but they have similarities.
One of the main similarities is the dehumanization of people. They were referenced as Jews rather than people. Now, in modern day, what do you refer to, uh, an unborn, an unborn baby as?
Why aren't you saying that's a person? Why aren't you describing that as a full-blown human being then? Why are you saying an unborn baby? Oh, this dude is so weird. It's like they, they literally got like, uh, they made a camp for like every fucking creepy person that you regularly avoid at school. Love that. Love that for them. Where they learn how to be more creepy and more annoying than before. They like learn how to improve their creepy skills.
It's usually either an embryo or a fetus, right?
Okay.
But both of those, in their respective origin, either in Greek or Latin, they both mean child. And so by dehumanizing it, by calling them something that people can't really relate to as much on a personal kind of connection, then you don't make the act seem as bad as it is.
Within this fellowship.
We're dehumanizing fetuses by calling them fetuses instead of like full-blown humans. Right? Except like, you know, you're doing that too. You said they're unborn babies. Why aren't you just saying they're full-blown babies?
Is it that you guys are getting trained to argue and debate? Or is it based in the idea of critically thinking about both sides of an issue?
What?
Within this fellowship, is it that you guys are getting trained to argue and debate? Or is it based in the idea of critically thinking about both sides of an issue?
Yeah.
I think that might be a better question for, um, Veronica.
Okay.
Because the fellowship is largely based on people who have already, um, have done the critical thinking side of it.
Oh, they already did the critical thinking. It seems like, it seems like they haven't. It seems like they hadn't critically thought that if they hear the other side's arguments at all, or if they're simply just learning how to fucking debate lord against abortion.
They're wanting to know how to communicate that. And also we're.
Literally, like, he did not have the training to answer that. That's now been added to the fucking skill tree or, or speech tree. Love that. Like, going forward, they probably have a precand answer for that that they will always use so they don't get caught slipping on semen. On the slippery slope of semen.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, eat up. Throughout the week, our access came with a hammer. Kim stood on the sidelines of almost every interview, often with a voice recorder in hand. In this program, are you teaching them to think critically? Or are you training them to defeat the other side?
Ooh, good question. Well, I would say that we are.
Yeah, she never thought about it until this moment and totally wasn't told ahead of time that this is a question that's going to be coming for her and prepared the best possible fucking answer that she could give.
Are challenging people's views. We, we are teaching them dialogue and critical thinking, but for the purpose of helping a person.
Oh, and then she did not answer the question. Never mind. She literally did not answer the question. She just said like, oh, we're just teaching them dialogue for the purpose of critical thinking and helping others.
This isn't like conversion camp. Like, everybody here is already pro-life. This isn't like conversion camp. Like everybody here is already pro-life. They care about this deeply. And now they may feel like they need to learn about other tools. So, let's have a five-minute break and then keep going. Stretch your legs, run around the block.
It's so weird to like, subject someone, like force someone into carrying a pregnancy to term. Like it literally makes no fucking sense. I don't know why, it just does not compute in my brain. Like when I hear this, I'm like, no, that does not make sense.
How are you this morning?
I am well.
I am the executive director of Rehumanize International. And the title of my talk is embracing the F-word, learning to love pro-life feminism. Because you know, in feminist circles, the word pro-life is seen as this, you know, like this cuss word that you can't really say. Because if you're a true feminist, it's presumed that you have to support the legal right to abortion. The core principles of feminism are equality, non-discrimination, and non-violence. Regardless of our age, or gender, or race, or religion, or nationality, or sexual orientation, we all deserve to live free from violence. Any sort of feminism that supports abortion actually reinforces structures of inequality, discrimination, and violence. My question is actually whether you can authentically be pro-choice and feminist. It is submitting to the structure of the patriarchy to perpetuate the idea that mothers are inherently disempowered. That mothers cannot achieve their dreams and their goals without their right to kill their children.
The pro-life movement seems to tell people through legislation, in every circumstance, if you become pregnant, you have to have the baby. So is that not counter to what feminism is all about?
So our proposition as pro-lifers is not to say that we want to remove, you know, nonviolent choices, but rather that abortion should be included along with domestic violence, along with rape, along with homicide as an offense that should not be allowed by law.
Wait, what? But like, okay, she literally just fucking, she literally just turned around and basically repeated that she wants abortion to be illegal in like a more calm and, and more wordy response. What the fuck? Like, she's, she's the same as the fucking Megacarin that we saw earlier, but just with blue hair and like patches that make it seem like from afar, she might be like some fucking crusty anarchist. When in fact, she's wearing patches that literally are just, you know, anti-abortion patches. Like that's it. Just compared getting an abortion to fucking domestic abuse and rape.
I think there's also this, this idea that within the pro-life movement, there's an inherent hypocrisy in that you guys are more pro-birth than you are pro-life. What about overhauling the foster care system? You know, what about Medicaid? Why put so-
She cares so much. Look, she's an empathetic person. She's an empathetic person. She has blue hair. She's a feminist, guys. Look at that, dude. Just like I care more about the top-of-the-hour ad break than letting the content run without it. I have such strong passion for it. The top-of-the-hour ad break, that's only sixty seconds long. But I tell you, if you want to add free broadcasting experience, all you need to do is subscribe for five dollars or for free with a Twitch Prime. That's the passion I bring to the table. Okay? You could also use an ad blocker or a VPN, but at least Twitch Prime is free. Here's the one-minute ad break now. Okay? I just aborted this entire fucking, you know, flow of content. Here's a one-minute ad break now.
So much emphasis on this fight and not when the baby is born?
It's a fair question, because it needs to be human rights for all human beings. But I also under-
Which is why we're gonna do human rights for fucking unborn fertilized eggs, dude.
Understand the necessity that a lot of, you know, mainstream pro-life advocates have. And that is because abortion takes on average, you know, somewhere above twenty-five hundred lives every day in the United States.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, God. Our Lord, that you be with us throughout this whole day, God, and that your mercy and spirit rests with us.
You can't be a fucking, you can't be a pro-birth, pro-life, I guess, but pro-birth feminist. It literally, unironically contradicts the values of feminism. Like you just can't, because you're saying, I care more about the fucking fertilized egg than the actual host itself, which is a fucking full-ass woman, dude. Like what the fuck? It makes no sense. Like, you're literally saying, I think the state should force women to carry pregnancy to term. Okay? Because I care more about the actual fucking like dice roll that might come out as like the next Hitler or a cool person, like a chill person, which is not even fully formed or formed at all at this moment, just a fucking fertilized egg. I care more about that thing than the autonomy that women have over their own fucking bodies. Also, I want to jail them. Like I want to fuck their lives up if they do end up getting a fucking miscarriage.
When we go to Planned Parenthood, as we use compassion to maybe help and deter people away.
Did my man just say dice roll of Hitler or a chill person coming out? I mean, this is the truth. You don't know what kind of fucking shit-ass baby you're gonna fucking pump out. You don't know? I mean, I'm joking, but... Yeah, I did say that.
We want to obviously like stay within the law-
What if you don't have a chill baby? Okay? What if your baby is unchill? You know?
Love you, chat.
The vibes are fucked at that point. You know what I mean? You fucking feed it, clothe it, give it food for like its whole ass life, and he's just like, I'm gonna be Hitler. Well, fuck you, dude. Piece of shit. What if your baby fails the initial vibe check? That's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm actually post-birth abortion advocate. You know, you fucking pop out the baby, okay? And you're like, yo, baby, what's up? Like, you vibe with this? You know, you throw on some music or whatever? Like if your baby comes out and he's like soy-facing at fucking Marvel Cinematic Universe movies, like that's a vibe failure. That's a vibe check failure. Put the baby back in. Let it sit a little bit longer.
In pro-choice and pro-universal healthcare.
Let the baby marinate! Oh, Jesus Christ, dude. Yo, yo, my shit came out undercooked, dude. Put it back in the oven.
Single, you pray. So, um, don't block the sidewalk. Stay like in a single file line along the sidewalk.
Like if, imagine you had a whole ass baby that you, you know, gave love to and fucking treated right, you know, made sandwiches for, whatever the fuck babies eat, I don't know. And then it came out to be this. That's terrible, dude. You should have tried again. I'm just saying, like that, that didn't, that didn't take, okay? This did not take. That's a bad, that's a bad batch. I was three weeks late. I was a homeschooler fetus. Wait, are they holding ha- oh my god, they're fucking, oh my god. This is literally the fucking Christian equivalent of like third base, dude. They fucked. Oh my god, this is birthright, but for unfuckable conservatives. Oh my lord. That's awesome.
We're at the Planned Parenthood in Houston, and we're praying and just staying in solidarity with the women who are going in there and trying to show support, so that they don't feel like they have to go through an abortion. This is the make-or-break situation. They're either going to go through this or not. And so if we can be there to encourage them in any way to not go through it, then I think it's super important.
This is some level of commitment in this rain, yeah?
Yeah.
I love harassing like, young women. Or even older women, like people that are making an incredibly difficult decision, okay? That they themselves are having like a tough time with, or maybe an easy one, but regardless, like, I love harassing people before they get a medical procedure. I mean, fuck it. Even like kidney surgery, or even like getting your, uh, like I had a, I had a fucking piece of like bone that was broken the size of a ping pong ball in my fucking kneecap, right? It's a routine, not very complicated, same-day surgery, a laparoscopic surgery, okay? Even then, I was like, you know, I'm dramatic. I was like, oh man, will I make it? Obviously not as dramatic as fucking Steven Crowder, but you know what I'm saying? Like, like that sucks, that you just like, you're walking into the hospital to get your fucking surgery and, and there's just people being like, why are you doing this? It's the demon in you! Keep the goddamn bones in your body! Like fuck you, dude. Also, like Planned Parenthood does so much more than just abortions, too. There's people there that are like literally there to get like a routine checkup. There's people there that are, you know, going there to get SDI, uh, SDI tested. You know, STD/SDI, full-blown, you know, tested for free. Because they don't have money to go get it everywhere else. They do cancer screenings and shit like that. And while you're there, while you're walking in to do that, they're like, don't do it! I'm gonna harass you. Don't walk in there now!
It's a life or death situation in this case, so-
If fetuses are babies because they're living cells, so is cancer? Yeah, I mean, cancer doesn't have the fucking, uh, the capability of turning into a life, though. Fetuses do. I, I recognize that.
Take it pretty seriously.
So this is my first time here and at any abortion facility.
Being it your first time, how are you feeling right now?
I'm feeling okay. Um, it's not as scary as I thought it would be. Um, and I'm just doing what I can, so, um, I feel just good that I'm doing what I can by being a peaceful presence here and participating with the other, um, the other fellows.
The pro-life movement is rethinking its approach to protesting abortion clinics. No more signs with pictures of fetuses-
Someone made a Venture Bros reference, and I really respect that. Good job, one chatter.
No calling women baby killers. Now it's all prayers and outspoken attempts to intercept the women who enter.
Every woman has her rights. Like, you don't ever know somebody's situation. I would break them in my backyard and ask, why don't y'all protest that type of shit? And Planned Parenthood is the only place that I know that I can come and get checked.
Right, we're not here to judge people. You know, we want to let you know that if you're suffering some kind of atrocity, if you're in a bad situation with maybe your significant other or your family, there are people who can help.
Look, when God gives you instructions, all you can do is-
Yeah, what now, dude? What happened when you face someone who's like actually, you know, getting checked up? And needs to get an abortion? That's the other part. It's like, if you are consistent, if you are consistent on abortion, it's not just the fucking in vitro fertilization thing that I just brought up. You also have to literally force fourteen-year-old girls to carry pregnancies to term if they have been incestually raped. Sorry, trigger warning, I'm using like really fucking aggressive language here. But like, that's still a life. That's literally still a life. You have to, you have to be an advocate for that as well. Because if your argument is like, if your argument is unironically that this is a life and you can't fucking kill it, then you literally have to do that. So why don't they do that? Why don't they? Why don't they advocate for that? I guess there is a point where they stop.
What do you guys make of all of these?
Find one that is pro-lifer, that is for death sentences? I mean, a lot of these are hogs, so they very likely are pro-death sentence.
The abortion bans that are being passed into law right now, are you guys in favor of these?
So certainly, the new legislation helps our cause. But ultimately, my mission is not to necessarily make abortion illegal, but to make it unthinkable and to make a culture that doesn't stigmatize women for being pregnant and doesn't treat pregnancy as a disease.
Any legislation that helps save lives ultimately, I'm in favor of. But I agree that I think that it's not just the legislation that's important, it's about changing hearts.
And the culture.
And the culture, exactly.
Are you all in favor of making abortion illegal?
Of course.
I can see a possibility where towards the end of our lifetime, or by the end of our lifetime, abortion is illegal.
Bro, this dude is, okay dude. I'm not gonna say it, but you know what I'm saying, okay? This, this dude can be saved, okay? As a matter of fact, he probably has been saved since this video was fucking shot. I mean, come on. Hey, come on. Come on, come on, come on, come on. Let's just say he's in no immediate danger of abortions anytime soon, okay? Uh, of... Even if he does end up having sex, he's in no immediate danger of like having their partner get an abortion.
But I think first we need to change hearts before we can change anything else.
What should be-
How do you save him? Unironically, he needs to watch like three Hasanabi broadcasts. If what the testimonials are true, that I hear all the time from dudes who are like, dude, I, I think I might be bi, like after watching your fucking broadcast, you know, it's just, that's what he needs to, that's what he needs to do. Watch a couple Hasanabi broadcasts. He'll be fine.
Be the ramifications for someone who goes through with an abortion if it's illegal?
That's more of a question for the legislative team. In our, in all of the bills that we write, the woman is never, ever, ever punished for having abortion. The abortionist himself is the one who encourages binding civil penalties.
Yeah, I would decline to answer that, because I, I don't think anyone's gonna perceive our answer in a, in a well manner.
And I also, like, I'm still learning how to state my own thoughts. I don't really want to say something that I don't feel fully confident in.
Because it was in the news in Texas during the legislative period, which caused a lot of controversy.
Students will get a crash course in legislation and-
Wait, I want to hear that again. What'd she say?
The woman is never, ever, ever-
Possibility where towards the end of our lifetime, or by the end of our lifetime, abortion is illegal. Um, but I think first we need to change hearts before we can change anything else.
What should be the ramifications for someone who goes through with an abortion if it's illegal?
That's more of a question for the legislative team.
So, that's a really great question, because we never even get to that part of the arg- So, that's a really great question, because we never even get to that part of the argument, which is that, how would you know the difference between someone who had a miscarriage and someone who did a back alley abortion? The answer is you can't. It's very difficult to fucking find out. So what are you gonna do? Are you gonna throw women who just had a fucking traumatic miscarriage? Like, they're, they're gonna go to jail now, like anyone who gets a fucking miscarriage? You know how many miscarriages occur? It's so fucking common.
In our, um, in all of the bills that we write, the woman is never, ever, ever punished, um, for having abortion. Uh, the abortionist himself is the one who encouraged binding civil, uh, penalties.
Yeah, I would decline.
So that's the, that's the, uh, the, the PR answer, which is abortion ironically, I mean, unironically, sorry, uh, punishes women regardless, like you're being punished by carrying a pregnancy to term. And if you don't want to fucking carry that pregnancy to term, like, you know, any sort of restrictions on abortions is punishing the women. But the way that they talk about it, the way that they make it seem like is like they're, they're, you know, punishing the doctors only, the abortionists, the doctors that are bad, because that's the PR answer. That's the, it's easier to, it's easier to fucking get people on board with your psychotic nonsense if you make it seem like you're punishing these bad, evil doctors and not the women themselves. You're still, you're still punishing the women regardless, what is this? Okay, we'll watch this in a second. I have to go pee.
To answer that, because I, I don't think anyone's gonna perceive our answer in a, in a well manner.
And I also, like, I'm still learning how to state my own thoughts. I don't really want to say something that I don't feel fully confident in.
Cause that was in the news in Texas, um, during the legislative period, which caused a lot of controversy.
Students will get a crash course in legislation and lobbying in their second year of training. Texas Right to Life also sends six full-time lobbyists to the Capitol in Austin. They've championed laws that have closed half of the abortion clinics in Texas.
Right now, is there a lot of momentum in the pro-life movement?
I think right now it's a really exciting time to be pro-life, just because I feel like a lot of minds are changing with what's happening in the country. And so it's, it's gonna be exciting just in the next couple of years, especially with like the new, um, federal judges, um, to see if like anything's gonna happen. But, uh, yeah, I don't really know how, how that legal stuff works.
And it's, it's exciting, because there's an even bigger call for us to be active. With all the, the abortion bans and such, we were called as pro-lifers to step up and be there, because now women will, you know, they'll be having more babies, which is great. And we want to be there and be able to meet their, their needs, so we really have to step up thinking.
Incredibly strange, dude.
How's everybody? Did you get actual sleep last night? Anybody? Three hours? Great, so if you flip your binder, it should be fellowship requirements. There's a Texas Right to Life copy and there's a student copy. You're gonna sign one, and then you're gonna sign the other, the Texas Right to Life copy and give it back to us. So that's the way you always, that way you always know what is expected of you. So as fellows, you yourselves are now affiliated with us. Um, and so we want to make sure that whenever you are speaking publicly, that anything you're saying or doing is, um, upholding Texas Right to Life's values and mission. So as an example, we know a lot of young people really love Bernie Sanders, a lot of young people really love Beto. And that's totally your prerogative if you vote for them. But publicly, we just ask that you uphold our mission and our values. Does that make sense?
Oh my God.
Okay, any questions about that? Cool? Great, next.
Oh my God.
I think it's the beginning of everything. I think it's brought to like a lot of issues on my own campus that I'm willing to stand up for now. And I'm more, more comfortable standing up for now.
I feel like I'm leaving with a whole new family. And I'm leaving with all this excitement to go back to my campus and present everything that I learned. I'm so glad that I was able to be here this week.
This week has sparked, um, kind of a fire inside of me to, um, keep doing what I'm doing and that what I'm doing matters. It's all about just like keeping the focus and keeping motivated. And like believing in my heart that what I'm doing is right and that I want to be on the right side of history.
Ready, one, two, three, say babies.
What the? Dude, these people are such fucking losers, dude. I don't know what else to say, other than they're just fucking losers, man.